Welcome to the committee, the whole meeting in the city council for April 12th, 2023. This meeting will now come to order. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Gunter. Councilmembers Cosson.
Here.
Cummings.
Here.
Hayden.
Here.
Long.
Here.
Shepherd.
Here.
Thank you.
Here.
Well.
Here.
Gunter?
Here.
All present.
Madam City Clerk, do we have a council member requesting to appear remotely?
Mayor Gunter has requested to appear remotely, yes, sir.
Is there a consensus to allow Mayor Gunter to appear remotely?
Yes.
Yes.
Any objections? Okay. We'll move on to item four, item four business. And item four A is citizens' input time. Citizens' input time is a maximum of 60 minutes set for citizens on matters concerning city governments. Three minutes per individual. Anyone wishing to speak, we ask them to appear at the podium to my far left. Anyone wishing to speak during citizens' input? Okay.
Excuse me for my hesitation, new to this. Good morning, ladies, gentlemen, citizens. I'm John Lumber, believe we give our name, from District One. I was listening, I'm a 70-year-old retiree, came down in 2008. And, well, I don't know if this is the right time, but anyway, on the news the other night, I had heard that we were revisiting from time to time the lessening of the codes as to what can be parked where, when, and how. Am I correct in that? Is that, is this the time to address that?
All right. Well, part of my reason for being in Cape Coral is when I came down here unknowingly, just happened to cross Cape Coral.
Part of the pleasure in it was that it was a very clean community. You say water paradise, which includes peace and serenity, you know, not clutter and garbage. And it's unfortunate that, you know, sometime the good have to suffer from the people that aren't complying with codes and whatnot. So, you know, to me, to lessen the codes on this would open up a can of worms or doors. It would be very difficult to either revisit or close later on. You know, there'd be some people that are compliant, some people that aren't compliant. And as a code enforcement person from another era, another jurisdiction, and another venue, I know it's, there's things that come about when you open these doors that you have to take in consideration as far as code enforcement, code compliance, court dockets, the paperwork involved, bringing people to compliance within the city. So, it's a, it's a tough thing. It's unfortunate that some people have to suffer because of those that you have to go after. But, you know, it's, you need to, in looking forward for the city of Cape Coral's plan, you're trying to bring in tourism, arts, entertainment, you know, cuisine, stuff like that. And I think, I'm from number one district, so down our way, it's kind of congested already and going to get more congested. So, you know, to have RVs, boats and stuff all over the place, I don't think it'd be conducive to what the city's planning for its long-term future. Thank you for hearing me out, and I'll address it later as soon as it comes up again, but thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during public input?
Sure.
And please state your name, I did forget to say that.
Hi, my name is Ronald Swan. I don't know if this is the proper time, but my input is against the boat laws, the boat parking laws. Is this the time to do that?
Yes.
Okay. The issues that I see with this is really against the fencing that's associated with the boat parking. I'm a longtime citizen of Cape Coral, probably seven, eight years now, eight, nine years. I have a boat and a trailer. I live in, off of Cape Coral Parkway West. So, most of the time, my boat is in the, on my lift, the trailer's in the back of my yard. I live in a corner lot, triangle-type lot, so my house is slanted to take advantage of the, of the triangle, a large lot. I have a lot of trees on, palm trees on there, but I can still maneuver my trailer back behind my third, part of my third garage, or actually, third car, anyway. I park it back there, it's out of sight, it's not seen from Cape Coral Parkway Street, or the Parkway itself. But since I live in a corner, there's 23rd that actually then can see my trailer. Trailer's down low, so nobody's ever complained about it. But when I park my boat there now, your new requirement says I need to have a fence. All right, now if I put a fence there, it's going to be impossible for me to actually move back in there and maneuver back in my boat. So, I'd have to move my fence further out into my yard, midway into my yard. That then puts the, puts the fence in sort of an ugly spot where it really doesn't cover the boat anymore. It just sits in the middle of the, of the lot. And it makes no sense to spend that kind of money to not really achieve what you're trying to achieve. So, I've walked around my, my whole neighborhood, walking my dog, I've seen trailers and boats on driveways. I understand what you're saying. I've also seen it between the house and the, and the garages. And they, they seem to be nice, and they're without fences covering them and everything else. So, I think, my concern is, is that I think you're trying to spread a solution across too much stuff. So, you're, you're putting a band-aid on the fence-type problem. You're trying to solve the boat on the driveway issue in the drive, on the grass. Let's keep it to that, move it off, move the fence out of it for right now. Because most of the people I've talked to are okay with doing the thing of moving their boat to the side of their house. They don't want to deal with the fences because each of them, like me, have a different situation they have to deal with. Their, their comment is if the fence stays in, they're going to try and do a lawsuit against the policies.
If you please finish up.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone, anyone else wishing to speak during public input? Seeing none, public input is now closed. Is there any council discussion? Councilmember Welsh?
Yeah, I've got some comments regarding the ordinance, but I was going to save them for when we have discussion on it. So, I want to thank the two speakers for coming out today and sharing your opinion on it. But we'll, I've got a whole lot more, and I'm going to explain some things, hopefully a little bit better for you when we get to that discussion topic. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to the agenda. I'm requesting that we move item 4B8, council-appointed boards and committees ahead of 4B1, parking regulations, and item 4B7, organ donor leave ahead of 4B2, quarterly grants. Do I have a consensus to move these items forward?
Yeah.
Okay. Any objections? Okay, we'll, we'll move on to item 4B8, council-appointed boards and committees. Mayor Gunter?
Thank you, good morning, everyone, and thank you for letting me participate remotely today. With the discussion with our city manager was brought to my attention that if you review ordinance 128-00, on July 1st of each even year, we as the council are supposed to review our boards and see if we want to continue those boards. We want to have a discussion to make sure that there's a substantial benefit to this council. And as a council, we know all of these boards that we appoint these members to. They serve the pleasure of this board, the, the city council, and to make recommendations and bring those recommendations back to us. You know, being here about five and a half years now, personally, I can't recall when we've had a discussion collectively on all 25 boards that we presently have now. So, I thought it was a good time to bring this forward, so we as a council could take a look at the boards. If you review the 25 boards, some of those boards is a statutory requirement, and I think staff will be able to advise us exactly which one of those boards are statutory requirements. Also, if you look at down the list, there are some boards, I know Councilmember Hayden had a desire to change a youth council to an advisory board because that would help the functionality of, of the youth council among its members. So, that could be a discussion we could have now as well. I know there are some boards, take the nuisance abatement board that we, you know, made this board and appointed members to it, but unfortunately, we've never used that board. You had the districting commission board, of course, for redistricting purposes. We only utilize that, I believe, every 10 years. We've recently completed the redistricting at the local and state level, I believe, last year. So, I don't know if that's a board that we want to sunset. And then take a look at the other boards to see exactly if they are boards that we want to continue. Additionally, I did look at all of the boards across the board, and for some reason, we had different term limits for, for certain boards. So, if you look at all the boards, some have two-year terms, some have three-year terms, and some have four-year terms. So, I thought this may be a good opportunity to take a look at the terms to see if we want to apply that consistently across all boards, or if we want to do something different. I just thought having different term limits, three different types of terms for a variety of boards, to me, I thought we would probably be better served to be more consistent across the board. Additionally, I think, since these boards serve at the pleasure of council, there may be an opportunity to take a look at these boards and appoint these positions across the board in December for whatever term that this council deems appropriate. Give you an example, if each December, you know, because we have staggering terms, so if you went to either a two- or a three-year consistent across the board for all of the boards as far as the term limit, that would give every year, the council, the opportunity to take a look at those particular individuals, see if you want to make a change, you don't want to make a change, you want to, you know, vote on extending their term for another period like, like we do now when we have boards and committees come forward. I just thought that we need to have some consistency across all the boards once we've identified exactly which boards that we want to continue to keep and which boards we do not. And so, that's, so why I brought this forward, especially since the city manager had pointed out with ordinance 128-00, which was in the year 2000, we may want to take a look at that resolution. I read through it, there's probably some things that we could change in that resolution to outline however our discussion goes today and make sure that resolution is up to date since we haven't looked at it for 23 years. So, thank you.
Madam City Clerk, can you remind council which, I believe there was four boards that had requirements that needed to be reviewed?
Yes, that would be the Transportation Advisory Board, the Parks and Rec Board. There are two others, just one moment.
Was it Gulf and Youth Council?
Gulf and Youth Council, thank you.
And I'll just weigh in real quick, and the mayor's right, although I have not worked with the city attorney's office yet, and that's my fault on getting the youth council board changed, actually out of an advisory role, which, which bounds them to Sunshine, into a different capacity where they, where they are freely able to meet and talk in situations that won't hold them to Sunshine. A lot of these kids go to school together, and they're talking with each other. And I would hate to put them in a position where information might be confiscated from their phones or whatever. So, I still need to get that changed. Our, our youth council and maybe Fort Myers are the only two youth councils in the state that fall under an advisory capacity where they have to meet under Sunshine and have public meetings only. This, well, that, this change will just not only align them with other youth councils, but that put them in a better capacity to communicate. Gulf Advisory, we're on the liaison. There have been discussions amongst the citizen board members about their effectiveness and whether they mattered or not. I think that's changed now because Coral Oaks is now under the general fund and not part of enterprise or special revenue. So, I think their input, whether it be on the golf cart pass, which we did dedicate money to and have them change, you know, I, I think they have a stronger role than what they've had in the past. Transportation Advisory, that's made up of all council members where we have discussions on things that this group will vote on. So, to me, I believe that one's still important. Parks and Rec just started. So, you know, I don't know if they've gotten into a rhythm or routine where that should be looked at stopping, I think. And I'll let the liaison on that weigh in. But, you know, for me, I think all four of those, those boards with the change in youth council and their status, you know, I, I believe all of them, in my opinion, are important. I'll let the rest of council weigh in. Anybody?
I got something else, once everybody else has the opportunity.
Did, do you want to say something, Mayor?
Yeah, I could real, real quick.
I'll call on council members, Stanky first.
Okay, that's fine, whenever everyone else has the opportunity.
Okay.
Then I'll weigh in again.
Thank you. I, in the supporting documents that we've got, I can see the ones that are required by statute and those that aren't, obviously, if they're required by statute, then there should be no concern other than how to make them as effective as possible and allow them to feel that they're effective and make a contribution. The others, we each have liaison responsibilities to those committees, and I, and I think it should be kind of a discussion, at least at this point, for the experience as a liaison to that committee and, and whether its current, you know, its ordinance that established it, whether the committee is, is operating within that, you know, description or whether there should be some increased involvement that that committee would have or that board would have, or, or reduced to where they, they do make a difference. So, I think it, I think it's really, it would take the time maybe to get a report from each one of the liaisons on their experience with the committee, how they think the committee is, is performing, how they feel they're performing, and, and make recommendations that each one of us can review before we would make a, a change in them. So, I, after 23 years, you think, yeah, you should take another look. So, I would be in favor of taking a look at each one of the committees and, and making a recommendation whether to sunset or increase or reduce their purview.
Okay. But taking that probably to another committee, the whole, when we've had time to review it.
For, yeah, each one, for each one of us to make a, you know, a prepared.
Sure.
Evaluation of their committee.
Sure.
Okay. Councilmember Cummings?
Yeah, I'm in agreement. Just, you know, there are a lot of boards and committees, and it is very time-consuming. And knowing that people reach out to us on a constant basis, letting us know what they feel, I just feel like there is a lot here, knowing we have head departments here in our city. And, and they, they go to the city manager and kind of let the city manager know what's taken place here and their ideas of what they feel should be changed and coming to us and letting us know as well. So, I feel like reducing would be a huge asset for us. There are a few on here I feel that are not necessary, that's my opinion. There are ones that are needed, absolutely. But I am in agreement that we need to take a deep look at this and remove some that are really not needed for us here on council.
Thank you. Councilmember Welsh?
Me looking at these boards and committees as a way for the public to be involved in what we do. So, I'd be curious to, to listen to which committees Councilmember Cummings is thinking we don't need, but I certainly want to stand behind the Parks and Rec Committee. It is one of the largest. You know, we have the Go Bond, we have all of these other things that our Parks and Rec does. And it's unfortunate that we got it started about a year and a half ago, and then we lost our Parks and Rec director. So, I certainly don't want to lose that committee because I feel like we've got a good group of citizens that provide input, and also, we need to give them a little bit more time to get going. But looking at the list that I have here, I don't see any really that, that I would, I would see are unnecessary. So, it, like I said, it's a good way for citizens to be active in their community and to provide a voice to council, and it, and it helps council. So, I do agree with the mayor, maybe we can make this so that all of them kind of come up at once because I know sometimes when we get into meetings, we have this board here, that board there, where if we can kind of consolidate it all at one time of the year and everything kind of roll over and updating our process there, I, I agree with and welcome, welcome that. But looking at this list I have here, I think all of these are important to the residents as a way for them to, to have input to us as their elected officials. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Long?
Thank you. Yeah, just to counter Councilmember Welsh's point, I, I agree, you want the public to be involved to a certain degree. But you balance in, in some of these instances, in my opinion, allowing that involvement versus dedicating a significant amount in, in some of these boards of staff resources to appease that, that involvement. Personally, I've sat on a board or two, and I guess we're going to hold off on when we have those discussions on a board-by-board basis where I would absolutely agree that, that it's not necessary, at least in the operation, to operate in the fashion that it is. And I guess like for the, for the mayor, I know he brought up a couple of different points, so I want to kind of reel him back in so that we, we don't miss anything. He talked about term limits, I believe.
Right.
Which to me, I agree, having them staggered. If there is a reason that we have for that, and I'm not aware of it, I'd like to be educated on it. Otherwise, for uniformity, I would be, I would be happy to kind of rein all those in so that they're on a similar basis. Two years to me seems reasonable. But as of right now, I'm missing some of the other points that he made. But I want to make sure, if he wants to kind of bring those forth so that we can hit them one by one so nothing's missed, I think that would be, that would be well. So, thank you.
Okay. Mr. City Manager?
Morning, thank you. I'd like to summarize a couple of items for discussion and then also make a recommendation.
Sure.
Administration believes that the nuisance abatement board, although has statutory reference for allowing it to be a board, is not one that we've utilized. If you heard the, the mayor say, we've had that board and it, it has not met. So, administration would, would make a recommendation to you all to basically sunset that board and, and have it go away. In addition to that, section 2-59 was amended by ordinance 128-2000. The way it's written, it provides that four out of all these boards require a review in even numbered years. Our recommendation from administration to you all would be to have that ordinance rewritten and, and have it indicate that all boards that are not required by statute be reviewed. Not just target a subset of a few that have to come before you all to see if they're worthy of, of being in existence, but have all the boards that are discretionary undergo the same review. It puts them all on the same playing field, allows them all to be assessed, you can take input. But our recommendation would be that section 2-59 be rewritten to have any discretionary board re-reviewed in even number years, and also to abolish the nuisance abatement board, if you so choose, in rewriting that to just remove that from being a board that you all have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Shepherd?
Yeah, I'm for review, reviewing all the boards since it's been such a long time just to see if they're an asset to the, the city or not, if, if they really provide a positive or, or, or even, or even work. So, I, I just think it's good that we relook at it all and tweak what we can and improve what we can. So, I'm for review, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stanky?
Thank you. I would, I would support all of them being reviewed on a, you know, every two-year basis. And I would also support the sunset of the nuisance abatement board. And from the standpoint, one thing that hasn't been mentioned is in those ordinances that establish the committees and the boards, it identifies the frequency with which they meet. And I think some of them, while they provide a benefit, there may not be a need for them to meet as frequently because there's not that much for them to talk about at each one of those meetings. If it's a monthly meeting, maybe it should be a quarterly meeting based on experience now as they've operated a while and the number of things that they have to deal with. I think that we should look at frequency of the meeting, not necessarily, should we have it or shouldn't we have it? But how often should we be taking staff time, taking citizens' time to come together if they don't have that much work to do on the frequency with which the ordinance was first written?
Thank you. Mayor, so it, it looks like there's consensus to review all committees, to look at term limits, to look at timetables on which they meet, and to dissolve the nuisance abatement board. But it also sounds like that, based on what I heard, that we may need further discussion at another cow before we vote on it. Any thoughts?
Yeah, thank you. You know, when I look down the, the list of 25, you know, first off, I agree that these boards give the community the opportunity to participate and to make recommendations. give the community the opportunity to participate and to make recommendations. So my intent wasn't to try to delete any particular board. It's just, if we're not using the board, then I feel that we either sunset it until we do need it, or if we do not need it, then we remove it. And to give you some examples, number six is Charter Review Commission. Of course, we only do that every so often by ordinance, so that particular board still needs to be there, but it, you know, it could only be applied how the ordinance is written or how we update it in this new ordinance that sounds like we may bring forward at a later time. Number 10 is Construction Regulation Board. That board has been abolished, so we can remove that from the list. Districting Commission, like I mentioned before, and it comes up every 10 years, so that can still stay on the books, per se, but only brought up when it's needed to be. We've already talked about the nuisance abatement board, so it sounds like we're going to move in a direction to remove that board. We also have the Selection Advisory Committee, which we do not have a, we have the committee, of course, but we do not have the liaison. And I'm not exactly sure how that, I know we had changed the ordinance. So I think I kind of like councilmember Steinkie's idea. The council members who's liaison on all these boards maybe can make a recommendation, you know, to continue the board or not to. And any recommendations as far as timelines, I kind of like the quarterly report. I know the Budget Review Committee, if you read that ordinance, it's pretty well defined when they meet. But I think we could look at all of these boards, and with this new ordinance that it sounds like we're going to move forward with, at some point, we make sure that we also recognize within each board, I think we have to look at, what are we trying to get from each board? What recommendation as far as exactly what the scope of work is that they work within? Kind of like the box, here's the box, this is where you work within. I know some of these boards really get outside of the parameters that it was designed for, so I think we have to make sure that we have those parameters outlined for each board, and that's something that we can do with further discussion. So I think councilmember Steinkie's idea, maybe we'll have all the council members that they are liaisons on make recommendations. I personally like the two-year term limits that start in December and still stagger them, so every December we are revisiting those particular boards with however that staggering works as far as each individual, and then have it consistent all the way across the board. One thing to keep in mind with that, if we decide to change, recently, I believe, we put two term limits on boards. So if we, two consistent term limits, so that if we change the term limit as far as time-wise, that may be something we want to look at. For an example would be if we decide to go to every two years for boards, do we want to keep the two-year or the two-term maximum, or do we want to maybe take that to three terms as far as each and every year? Of course, we can skip a term and come back, but that may be something we want to think about as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Mr. City Manager, it looks like kind of a two-pronged approach here. We'll all review the committees that we're liaisons on. It looks like we're looking at a rewrite of the ordinance to include reviews, but that we'll have further discussion, including term limits on this, at another committee of the whole before we take it forward for a vote. Is that what I'm hearing?
So, may I summarize this so we
Yep.
Run the same page. We will rewrite section 2-59 to require all discretionary boards to have an annual review every, in even numbered years. We will abolish the nuisance abatement board. We can write, it sounds like there is some agreement, and I just want to make sure, to put in term limits and a standardization of term, and then have those be, have those commence in December. If that's a consensus, we can write that, we can bring that back for review, and then if you all want to change the term from three years to four years, or three years to two years, or leave, we'll put a number in there, and then you can give us direction on exactly what you would like it to be in the next meeting, as well as we'll work with the liaisons of each board to prepare a summary of recommendations for those boards. And then during the next COW, what we can do is go through each of those boards, if you want, as the mayor explained, expand the box or contract the box in which they are operating under, and the meeting frequency, we can do that for each one in the next meeting.
Okay. Everyone agree? Okay.
Very well, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. We'll move on to item 4B7, which is organ donor leave. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, thank you. April is National Donate Life Month. I was approached by a couple of employees who indicated to me that we have had an employee or have an employee who is suffering from an organ failure. And I was asked if there was anything that the city of Cape Coral as an organization could do in that regard. And at the time I was asked, I didn't have an answer. But I let them know that I would look into options and see if there was something I could come up with. I didn't even know at the time that April was National Donate Life Month, but I found that out shortly thereafter. I began researching what other cities, states, and counties provide or do in this regard, and I found that some offer the ability for an organ donor or recipient to take leave granted by the organization and not utilize their own leave bank that they would otherwise use for their friends or family vacationing or just taking time off. This would, so the proposal that I'm advancing for you all to consider and discuss would be to have the organization provide organ donor leave. I'm advancing two weeks. You're going to see in the presentation that other states and municipalities do varying different things, but I think this is a step in the right direction. We can celebrate donating life. There are benefits to the health plan, dialysis, and some other treatments cost hundreds of thousands of dollars a year, whereas a surgery may cost significantly less. There is protection at the state level in statutes for someone who does donate an organ. There's a protection that insurance companies cannot target them as high risk. So there are several things working for this policy. We have similar types of leave programs in the city, such as jury duty, bereavement leave, military leave, and this would just be one other type of leave to incentivize the most altruistic behavior that I can think of. So with that, I'll turn it over for a presentation to Lisa.
Good morning. Lisa Sinogo, Human Resources Director. As City Manager stated, Organ Donor Month, and to that effect, we do have outside in the hallway a table with our CERT individuals, staffed by them. If individuals would like to sign up as a live donor or as a deceased donor, maybe on your driver's license, et cetera, there's a place online that people can do that, so you do have the ability to do that. Just some quick statistics. As of September 2022, 1 million organ transplants have been performed in the United States, which is great. About 93,000 transplants were performed between 1954 and 1987, and 907,000 have been done since 1988. And this is done by a network that tracks that. Last year, transplants exceeded 42,800, and living donors were 6,400 of those, which is just of some interest. We do have, through here, this is a ordinance language that you will see, we're reviewing that with you today, next week, April 19, and then to be heard on May 3, which, this is the wording, you'll see A here, and B, the employees eligible to receive up to 40 hours of leave time when due to donation or receipt of bone marrow. So that is one week. Bone marrow is what we're seeing in research is also included in donor, organ, leave, and/or recipient. Remember, this is also being brought forward as if someone's receiving and/or giving. And B, we have carved out for two weeks for organ donor. So one week for bone marrow, and then two weeks for organ donor or receiver. And we just put that into hours for ease of administration. We do have with us Nancy Dugan, who will do a short presentation about some of the particulars that get involved here. She's an HR and Risk Services Consultant with Garing Group. You're familiar with Garing Group, our outside consultant. She has over 30 years executive HR experience, working for public sector employers in the state of Florida. And she does partner with Garing Group Senior Benefit Consultants, which you're familiar with, ours is Dustin. And she does things just such as this, where does a lot of policy research and some other items. So we're happy to have Nancy with us, and she'll take a minute and go through a few items for you.
Welcome.
Good morning, thank you. So based on the information the City Manager and Lisa just gave you, I have some additional information, high level, so you can take that into consideration as you all have this discussion this morning. The first thing is, Lisa was talking about, the leave is for both a donor and a recipient. The definition of a living organ donation typically includes whole or partial organs that you can donate. Kidney and lungs would be the whole organs, partial organs would be like a liver and a pancreas. Donations do not typically include blood, blood components, or skin grafts. So typical donation of blood would not be considered as eligible for this leave. Recipients of an organ donation typically include those receiving an organ, such as heart, lung, liver, kidney, pancreas, small bowel, and then bone marrow. So those are the typical lists of what recipients are waiting for, kidney being the highest of those. Federal law gives federal employees 30 days of paid leave for donating an organ and seven days for bone marrow. So there's approximately 20 states changing all the time, especially now that it's legislation session, states are talking about. The ones who don't currently offer a state mandate for leave policies, they're typically anywhere from the 30 days to five to seven days under the state policies. Florida does not have a state policy, which means that it's not mandated, so there's more flexibility in, for cities and counties to decide to do what they would like to offer for their employees. Typically, what's covered when you're using this type of leave bank, your pre-donation testing and preparations, excuse me, organ donation procedure itself, the post-donation recovery, and then if there's complications from surgery for both the donor and the recipient. The pre-donation testing and prep for a donor is typically one to three days, and that's not full days, it's a couple hours here and there for testing to make sure you're a match and make sure you don't have any other health conditions. The organ donation procedure itself is three to five days in the hospital typically if you're the donor, six to 12 weeks without complications before you're back to normal daily activities. Depending on, for the recipients, it's a wide variety of what the healing time is, it just depends on what their medical condition is and what organ was donated to them. Your current benefits, just to give you a high-level overview, your medical insurance does currently cover anything in the following list, so bone marrow, corneal, heart, heart-lung combination, liver, pancreas, does currently cover those. So if you're on the Cape Coral Health Insurance, then that procedure is covered. You also have several other policies. You have an Aflac benefit that's voluntary on behalf of the employees. If they elect to have the Aflac benefit, day 15 for illness. So if they're a donor, it will cover 60% of their earnings for up to six months, and that's, again, a voluntary policy you all offer. For long-term disability, it's employer-paid, they'll get 66 and 2/3 of their salary, 181-day elimination period, so it'll kick in after, when the 181 days goes by. That, depending on complications, they can receive that up till their social security age. And then you have group life insurance, and there is a rider on there, it's a guaranteed issue, so if you are an organ donor, you will not get rejected for life insurance under your health insurance, under your life insurance plan. There's a couple of resources that are used when looking at these type of leave programs. The National Living Donor Association is one of the bigger ones. They actually fund for the organ and recipient, they fund some of the lost wages, travel expenses, and even childcare. To be eligible under that program, it's based on the recipient's income, and there's a chart, it's based on living wage, so depending on how big the household is, there's a chart that you look at the salary, and then it tells if they're eligible, if the donor is also eligible to receive funding from that association. And then there's, I listed a couple others. The most important, like Lisa mentioned, Donate Life Florida. That's the one in the state of Florida where you can sign up to actually be an organ donor and get additional information. Any questions?
Any questions? Councilmember Welsh?
First of all, I think this is a great idea, but I noticed a couple of things on the slides that you had brought up as far as the, on the federal level, they seem to only cover for organ donors, not organ recipients. Is that true? If you're an organ recipient, you don't get this benefit on the federal level?
Correct. They have just their regular FMLA leave and whatever leave banks they have.
Yeah, so that was the only negative I see about this. I think all of this is very positive. For me personally, I think it's great to offer some incentives to people who are donating their organs, but to use taxpayer money to give extra incentives for people to receive an organ, or get extra paid time off or leave, I don't think is a wise use of our dollars or, you know, at this point, maybe we're incentivizing someone to try to get a job at the city because they know they're going to get paid to get their organ transplant. So I'm all for it as a, for the donor, I would like to see this maybe come back with it, that the recipient utilizes their standard healthcare to take care of health care issues. Thank you.
Councilmember Steinkie?
Thank you. Just one quick question and then a couple comments. Under federal, it says that they get 30 days to donate their organs and seven days to donate bone marrow, and it looks like we're only looking at, what would be 15 days? Two weeks?
I was proposing two weeks. Again, all of this is, this is a COW discussion, so if there is consensus amongst council to modify any portion of this, that's your discretion. I'm proposing this, and you all are free to amend.
Okay. My guess is, is that more than likely, they did some research that would kind of put together some averages of how long does it take, you know, to kind of put together some averages of, of how long does it take, you know, to recover from the donation and whatnot, and so, in for a penny, in for a pound, if we were to do this, I think we should rely upon some standard of, hey, this is what we found that it takes, and if we're going to do it, then let's do it. I would be in favor of it for two reasons. My driver's license does say organ donor on it, so I'm certainly a proponent of, you know, giving when you can, and being able to receive when you need it. I think it's an attraction for employees to come to the, to the city, it's one more benefit. As we look at Cape competes, and we want the, you know, the best people that we can here involved with the city, I think it's an additional attraction, and gives us a competitive advantage when someone's deciding to come to work for the city instead of, you know, somewhere else, either in, in city government or outside. And I think it's motivation for a donor. I know that, you know, many, I would, I used, I would believe, I don't know, but I would believe that there are many people that would be willing, but because of the effect it would have on their family to take the time off required, that they wouldn't. And so I think it's a motivation to increase the number of people that could donate, that might already be motivated to, or motivate those that may not have thought about it before, that it's actually put in front of them as a benefit, it may encourage them to get involved when they can, and go get tested to see if they would be a match, and if they could help. So I would, I would be in favor of it, and I would, and I would also be in favor of matching what federal, you know, looks at, because of the fact that they probably did research on why to give that number of days.
Thank you. Councilmember Cosdine?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Proten. First, let me say I'm a hundred percent behind this. I have a question that you might not be able to answer. Do we know how many organ donor recipients we had in the past, however many, months, years?
I will have to state, I believe it's only about two or three over the last ten years. It's not a significant amount, but we did not do a dive into our Blue Cross information, just, and we would not know who they are, but we often know who, we just often know through FMLA and things like that, so.
Right, okay, that's fine, so just a handful, that's the answer in the past decade. So I would imagine that would be a similar number for organ donors, and so, or something, you know, around there. So I'm not concerned about the cost at all. I think HR benefits are important for attracting and keeping employees, and just seeing that on a list, even if you're not going to use the benefit, I think is important. And it's also important to do the right thing for other humans, and this is a chance for us to do that as a city, and so I think this is a great opportunity, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cummings?
Yeah, I'm in favor of it as well. I'm also an organ donor, and I think if you can help someone or save someone's life, then you should do the right thing and do that. So I really appreciate you putting this together, I am in agreements with that, and I think the numbers would rise, knowing that you have an opportunity within the city that we would support them, that more people will come forward to help save another life. So I am for this, and thank you.
Thank you. I'll weigh in. I got to know the Donate Life people probably ten or fifteen years ago, and became an organ donor at that time, just because of the impact they were making. And I think the real true incentive here is saving a life, whether you're a donor or a recipient. I think the paid leave just helps lessen the stress a little bit, knowing that the, that the costs may not be as high, because you're being, you're being paid for that. So I would actually like to see us at least match the federal requirements for organ, organ donor. We're already saying that we're, whether it's the donor or the recipient, that we are giving eighty hours, you know, I would like to see, see that increase to a month. You know, the, the bone marrow, I think, I like the way that one, that one is set up, but I think just because of the significance of the program, and, and what it means, you know, this has so many positives to me at all levels, and it, and it does all come back to about saving a life, and that's, that's the most important thing to me. Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes, I'm for the program, and I have no problem with considering improving it even more, like our other council members have stated, with more time. I think the positive outweighs the cost, and the, the cost of helping someone in a situation like this, the cost has no relevance, so I'm for it one hundred percent, and I'm for if we want to tweak it to being closer to the federal guidelines as well. Thank you.
Mayor, I don't know if you're still on, did you want to weigh in?
Yes, sir, thank you. Yeah, this is definitely a program that I'll support as well, and just like Councilmember Hayden and Shepherd, I would lean more towards mimicking the federal guidelines that are in place. This is, you know, a great program. Probably many of you don't know, my mother was a lung recipient from, from a transplant, gave her eighteen years, there's a quality of life that she wouldn't have had otherwise. So it's a great program, I definitely support it, and like I had mentioned before, I would lean more towards the federal requirement. Thank you.
So I, I don't have any other lights on unless someone that hasn't weighed in yet wants to, wants to weigh in. It sounds like there's consensus to mirror the federal program.
I, when I advanced two weeks, I didn't, I didn't know about the thirty days, that that was the standard. I have no problem, I think there is certainly support for that, so we will make a small tweak to this ordinance, and I do intend on advancing it at the, the next regular council voting meeting for introduction, so we can move it forward in National Donate Life Month.
Okay. Everyone agreeable? Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item four B, discussion. First up is parking regulations brought forward by Councilmember Welsh.
My time to shine?
Your time to shine.
Thank you. So this has been something that I've been looking at for the past two years, and got with the city attorney's office, and, and one of the things that I realized growing up here in Cape Coral is the regulations we have on parking of boats and trailers, and how strict they were. You know, you, you buy your piece of land, your piece of property, we are known as the boater's paradise, and the only way you can enjoy that is either, one, being on the water, but as someone who doesn't have a waterfront property, if I want to enjoy that, I have to try to find a way to get my boat behind the back of my house. Twenty years ago, that was easy, because we weren't as, as full as we are now. You could pull through a side yard, you could pull from the street behind you, and you could park your boat behind your house, but now as our lots have stayed the same size for the past twenty years, and the, we have new neighbors on the left and the right, even behind us, and the fact that the houses are built up on a higher grade, I believe it is more difficult for you to try to maneuver your boat or trailer behind the rear side of your house. So I wanted to bring this forward to maybe loosen some of the restrictions to where you're not trying to navigate a boat along the side of your house to the rear of your house, and still park it in there, but be able to park it behind a fence in the front, if you want. This way, it's, it's easier to access and easier to use, and kind of reduces some of the regulations on it. So I think what we've come up here, or come up with, is that if you still, if you don't want to have the fence, you can still put your boat or your trailer behind your house. But if you want to park it on the side, I thought it was important to at least have it shielded from the view of the road, which is what would have happened if you put it behind your house, by parking it behind that fence line. So as the gentleman stated earlier, he still can park his trailer behind his house, or on the rear of his house, without having to purchase the fence. So I didn't want to have it restricting, but just allowing access to the side yards for those who, who can't navigate their boat or trailer freely. Another thing was, right now, the only thing you're allowed to have in regulation is a boat or a boat trailer, and I believe that with the Parks Go Bond and all the recreation we have in the city, that saying that the only type of recreation you could have is a boat or a boat trailer is limiting to those who might enjoy, let's just, you know, we have a BMX facility here in Cape Coral, and someone who, who uses BMX might have a trailer that's full of twenty bikes and bike parts, and they drive around the state, or someone who likes to go four-wheeling, might need a, a trailer to, to put their things on. So I wanted to remove the restriction of only being a boat, because we have all sorts of recreation, or all sorts of things. What I didn't do with this is I did not change any restrictions on mobile homes, and I didn't change any restrictions on commercial vehicles as well. So a lot of the negatives I got were, okay, now I'm going to have this giant lawn trailer next to the house. Well, that's still a commercial trailer, and that's not allowed with this ordinance. So all this is doing is relaxing some of the restrictions, because I can see the difficulty in trying to move these recreational vehicles to the rear of the home. Like I said, especially with us building everything up. So it's, it's kind of minor what the changes are, but I believe it's going to help the community as it's grown up over the past twenty years, to kind of bring our regulations into order. So I've, I've got it here, if anyone has any other questions or, or comments, I'm, I'm hoping that, that what I've done is, is good for everyone, so thank you.
Let's do a little Q and A. This gentleman's question about, let's put the boat on, on the side, so is that going to be a three-sided fence, or is it just going to be one little strip of fence to protect it?
So the way the ordinance is, is written, is that the fence only is in the front of the house, so that would be blocking the view of the boat from the street, if you wanted to keep it on the side. But if the boat or trailer is on the rear of the property, no fence is needed.
Okay, so he could just put a little strip of fence, one piece of fence along the side of the house?
It would be the front of the house, not the side, so it would be blocking the front view from the street.
Okay, so like a five-feet piece of fence?
I believe so, yes, the way it's written.
So just basically a gate, or he could just?
He could have a gate on the front.
Okay. So why do you feel the need to, if, if you want to lessen the burden on people, why do you feel the need to have to cover it up?
I don't. When I started asking some people, before even bringing this forward, I just took into consideration what, what most people talked about. A lot of it was how unsightly it might be to have a boat trailer seen from the road, and how it would degrade our community. So with hearing that as a lot of concerns, that's why I put this in. I don't really care either way, if there's a fence, or there's not a fence, or if you can see it from the road, but I, I took into consideration what I heard from the community, and that's why I, I put this in there.
There was a, there was a height restriction on the trailers, right?
Correct. So another, another thing that came across when I first talked about this was someone said, and it was a joke, but I took it very seriously when I, when I brought it up, and they said, okay, well, now I'm going to bring my Mardi Gras trailer and park it on the side of my house. So I thought, you know, what, what, also, let's say someone has a monster truck and puts it on the trailer, and they want to park it next to the side of their house. Well, I thought by having this height restriction on a trailer would eliminate some of those commercial or, or, or trailers that could be hindering to a neighbor who, let's just say, doesn't want to see it next to him. So having that ten-foot allows for small enclosed trailers for recreational purposes, eliminates some of those commercial uses, and also provides that restriction.
Thank you. Mr. Assistant City Attorney?
Yeah, there, there are three items, there's trailers, boats, and boat trailers. So there's trailers and boat trailers. Mr. Nocleario can kind of clarify about the fence, because he's the one that worked on it with Mr. Welsh, Councilmember Welsh, I did not.
Sure, hi, John Nocleario, Assistant City Attorney. The ordinance before you, Councilmember Welsh, received the plus one from the council to work with our office on doing a draft. The current regulations in the Land Development Code prohibit commercial vehicles and trailers in a residential zoning district, period. The ordinance before you that we worked with Councilmember Welsh on really doesn't do anything for boats, and maybe we misunderstood Councilmember Welsh, because there is no fencing. The only thing we do with boats and boat trailers in this ordinance, and again, maybe there was some miscommunication, was they're allowed on side yards now. There is no fencing requirements for boats and boat trailers in this draft, and maybe that was some miscommunication. The only fencing requirements are trailers are currently, regular trailers, we distinguish between trailers and boat trailers, they're defined in the Land Development Code. Regular trailers are currently prohibited anywhere. This opens the door to boats, boat trailers, and trailers to be in the side yards. There's no fencing requirement in this draft for boats at all. For trailers, regular trailers as defined in the code, there's a fencing requirement, and there's a height requirement.
Okay, so just to sum up, boats and boat trailers could go on the side without a fence?
Yes, sir, under this draft.
Trailers?
There's no?
Trailers with a height stipulation would require?
Trailers are not boat trailers.
I mean, well, yeah, trail, not boat trailers.
Boats and boat trailers could be on the side yard on this draft, there's, under the current draft, there's not a fencing requirement, and there's no height requirement for boats and boat trailers.
Correct, but for trailers, there is a height requirement.
And a fencing requirement.
Okay. Councilmember Stanky?
I think we can talk all day about ten-foot height requirement, six-foot fence. If the height requirement's ten feet, then it's not being hidden behind a six-foot fence. So while that partly would alleviate the issue of unsightliness or attractiveness of a property, you've still got four feet above the six-foot fence that would have to be accepted by the neighbor, by the passersby, and whatnot. So my, I, I can't show favor for this, and it, it starts literally a third of the way into the first page, where it says, whereas the city council hereby finds that this ordinance is in the best interest of the public health, safety, and welfare. I, I can't agree with that, and one of the reasons why I can't agree with that is a required setback is seven and a half feet. Ingress egress on the sides of the homes, from the bedrooms that are there, there's, there's, I believe, a three-foot requirement that allows people to get in and out of the house, and it allows public safety officials, firefighters, police officers, the ability to get into a home when necessary. As, as soon as we, I, I, so if you leave that three feet to get in and out, you're only left with four and a half feet, and I don't know many boat trailers that are four and a half feet wide, much less, yeah, you might get some small storage trailers that would, but, but for the most part, it, it takes away from the safety of that home. You're also putting combustible materials right next to the home. Many of our residents have rooms on the side of their homes where they like the view that they have out of that window, whether, you know, whether it be to a green area, whether it be to a waterway, and we're, at that point, we're obstructing their view. We know that within twenty feet of a seawall, you can only have a three-foot obstruction, so to speak. Then you've got to be able to have seventy-five percent visual permeability above three feet. So why would we want to block someone's view with a recreational vehicle? So, um, why would we want to block someone's view with a recreational vehicle, uh, up in between the two homes? So if the person who owns the boat or boat trailer wants to increase the risk potential at their home, that's up to them. But then you're also imposing that risk potential on the neighbor as well. Um, and the last is from a code enforcement standpoint, um, we are putting forth a, a, an increased effort to enforce the codes that we currently have. Uh, and when you think of now, uh, a recreational vehicle being placed beside the house, um, they're not allowed to be inhabited. Well, how do we know it's being inhabited or not inhabited until, um, it's inspected? And so now we get, we have to put that, uh, additional responsibility on code enforcement to make sure that the recreational vehicles are not being used as another, you know, an additional dwelling unit, uh, on the property. So I think, I think it, I think it opens just too much of a Pandora's box. I think it increases, uh, safety risk. And, and for those reasons, I, I just can't support it as written.
Thank you. Councilmember Long?
Thank you. Yeah, for me, um, this isn't something that I can support. Um, I said that originally before we got started and, and the fact remains. Even as it's currently written, um, it, it gets messy. I mean, I can't even read the dang thing. So imagine trying to have code enforcement go out there and, um, make an evaluation on a site specific. I mean, we've got opaque fences. We've got open mesh. We've got weeds to 12 inches, 10 feet high, 20 feet off the property line. We went a little too far, I think, and, and I appreciate council member Welsh's desire to, um, try to, uh, address, uh, what he perceives to be an issue. But I think for me, this actually is going to harm more people than it hurts that are existing under the current ordinance. Because as it exists, it doesn't have that 10-foot minimum for rear yards, if I'm understanding that correctly. And just from an observation standpoint, driving through neighborhoods, there's individuals that do have those boats in the rear yard. A lot of them have a T-top on it or some other, uh, a majority of them exist beyond 10 feet. And so I don't think that this addresses that. I think that we're actually going backwards because now people that have otherwise been in compliance in the rear yard, um, by adding this language for the 10-foot, unless I'm, is that limited to just the trailer or is that the boat? It is limited to the trailer. Okay.
Excuse me. John Nocleario, City Attorney's Office. The height restriction has nothing to do with boats and boat trailers. The height restriction is purely for regular trailers.
Okay. Well, then yeah, well, then that doesn't, uh, then that takes back that point. Uh, but the fact remains for me, um, aesthetically, from the side yard perspective, uh, even if we move forward and change the, um, the fencing, there's a gap like councilmember Stanky mentioned, so that it, uh, basically nulls that whole point of having the fence altogether. Also to mention that a lot of the side yards, if you're looking at a standard lot, um, these properties are elevated. So it's, it doesn't make a lot of sense for these, uh, these side yards in the traditional sense. You're going to be, you, you can't park the boat there. So while this does, um, on its face appear to be solving an issue, it's not applicable to a significant portion of the properties that we have here in the Cape. Of course, there's some outliers, some of the older homes that don't have those requirements. Uh, as far as at a point in time they were built, they didn't need to meet those elevation requirements. Or they have triple lots. There's a couple of nuances, um, where it would be more applicable. But if we're trying to appease, um, to the city as a whole, I don't think that it, it hits that mark. Yeah, for those reasons, I'm not going to be able to support it. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Cummings?
I, in, in the very beginning, I was in favor of this, but after the hurricane has taken place, getting a look at what it would look like, it, it's not a really pretty sight. Having people have the boats, the emails that had came through with people complaining, please have them remove the trailer. Please have them remove the boat. Just look at our neighborhood is not looking good. I'm in agreement of not having this ordinance move forward and keeping it as is. As councilman, um, Stanky has stated, this could be a Pandora box that would open. After looking at it in a, it, much deeper, it, it could create a lot of problems. And right now we want to solve problems and not continue on having more and more problems occurring. I, I can understand what you're saying, councilman Welsh. However, we, we want to keep our community clean. And I feel like that's clutter after what we've just witnessed and, and seen. I, I'm not in favor of this. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Welsh, I'm going to go to councilmember Shepherd next, and then probably the mayor, just so you can hear from, from everybody. Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes, I'm for, uh, keeping it the way we have it. I understand the council member trying to help out citizens, uh, because that's our job. Our job is to always look at these ordinances and try to improve when we can. So, um, I commend them for trying. But, uh, the side yards scare me because not everybody has, mo- most side yards are very small, very narrow. They're pitched for drainage. We would be impeding drainage between the two houses. We're all, we're also, uh, you know, a lot of these boats, uh, hold anywhere from 20 to 50 gallons or even more of fuel. It's like putting a bomb, you know, literally feed, uh, to a house. That can be an extreme hazard to their neighbors as well. And the other thing is value, you know? I ran on protecting the value of our neighborhoods and our citizens' real estate. And I believe that this would, uh, lower the value if we had this kind of clutter. And, and like councilman, uh, other council member has stated, in a hurricane, having a, a boat literally feed away from a home could end up being a problem as well. So I'm for keeping it the way it is at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, did you want to comment?
Yes, thank you. You know, I, I've read through this, uh, ordinance and, uh, you know, I like, sounds like many of you have, uh, a lot of concerns and I'll give you a few of my concerns. Uh, you know, when you, when you look at this ordinance, there's some restrictions on these side lots, but no restrictions in place in rear lots. Uh, so you can still put a trailer in the rear of your property. Um, it just says trailer, but there is no restrictions at all in the rear. The other concern that I have is, uh, you know, when you look at our Land Development Code and look up commercial vehicle, that's a motorized vehicle. So what you could eventually see in our community is you're going to have contractors bring their Bobcats home. They're going to bring home their, uh, uh, mini excavators on trailers and put them either on the side or rear of the property. Uh, you're going to see, uh, concrete pump trucks, uh, which are trailers, concrete pump trailers. Uh, you're going to see them, uh, start showing up in our, in our community. You're going to see a boat on the side lot of a home that may be seven and a half to 10 feet. There's no height restriction there. Uh, so you can bring a huge boat down, uh, parking it next to your house, uh, on the side, and there's no height restriction there. You know, I think, uh, like councilmember, uh, Shepherd had mentioned, I think our, our responsibility is to make sure that we are increasing the value of our community and not decreasing the value of our community. And with this ordinance, if it would move forward, which it doesn't, sounds like it will, in my opinion, this will surely devalue our community. Uh, and then if you even look at the, uh, safety mechanism, we, our fire chief had written a letter stating that he has concerns parking combustible, uh, material, uh, fuel in a boot, uh, right directly next to a house. Uh, so our own fire chief has some concerns with the, uh, life safety component of this ordinance. Uh, there are many other things that I had, uh, had written down, but, uh, it sounds like a majority of council, um, isn't in favor. I'm not in favor of the ordinance. To me, uh, you shouldn't try to fix something that isn't broken. For me, our existing ordinance that we've had, uh, for several years is working. And in my opinion, we should continue with the ordinance that we already have in place and, and not move forward with trying to change it in any fashion. Thank you.
Councilmember Welsh?
Well, I, I don't agree with all of you, um, because obviously this is my ordinance. And, uh, from what I've gathered from the community, um, I've gotten about a 75% approval rate from, uh, anyone that I've spoken with on this. So, uh, what I'm, what I'm going to ask, um, since I've gotten the side yard, it's basically a no from everyone up here. Maybe scale it back a little bit to amend the fact that right now, per code, the only thing you're allowed to have in your yard is a boat or a boat trailer. So what I'd like to do is at least relax that restriction to allow an enclosed trailer in the rear of people's yards. Because not only, um, does it restrict you to just a boat or a boat trailer, like I said, there's other recreation and other, um, things needed for trailers. I am, to councilmember Stanky, I'm not allowing RVs. I'm not allowing anything that's in a habitable dwelling. But I would like to at least re- relax some of the restrictions to only boats and boat trailers. So, um, if I could get everyone's opinion on that, I have no problem, uh, going back and changing this, uh, to remove side yards. It was an idea, I thought. Uh, I, I said, I got a lot of positive support from the community. I don't think I'm getting that support here, but I would like to, uh, like I said, at least allow an enclosed trailer, uh, of some sort, uh, to go alongside with boats. So if I could get everyone's opinion on that, if it's even worth me using any more of the city attorney's time to recraft this ordinance. Thank you.
Councilmember Cosden?
Thank you. Um, I had my light on just to share my thoughts, but I'm not going to pile on. Uh, I think we're kind of in consensus about how we feel about the original ordinance. Um, and I wouldn't be able to get behind what you just mentioned, councilmember. But I thank you for your work on this. I know, and your persistence, because you were persistent and I know you worked hard on this. So thank you.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not going to repeat what everyone said. I agree with pretty much everything was said and councilmember Welsh. I think, you know, it, it's almost like you're scrambling now to come up with something. I don't think that's a good reason to try and bring any ordinance forward. We're, we're not broken on this. Um, I firmly believe that. And, um, I'm in fever, in favor of keeping things the way they are. We'll, we'll take any more comments on, uh, council, what councilmember Welsh just said, if there are any.
Councilmember Hayden?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I, uh, I agree with you. Uh, uh, you know, I, I don't think it's broken, uh, our existing ordinance the way it is. I think should continue. And, uh, I agree, this isn't the time to scramble and, and try to make, uh, something out of, out of this particular ordinance. So I feel that we should just, uh, continue like we have been for several and many years. So, thank you.
Councilmember Welsh, I too appreciate your work on this. I know this means something to you. I know you're trying to help the residents and that was your only cause moving forward. But, um, I don't believe you have the support for this. So, you know, it will be up to you, your next step. But I think council's way in and the consensus would be that, uh, this particular ordinance doesn't work for our community.
Thank you, guys. Uh, what I've heard here is the way, obviously you think I'm scrambling now, um, to come up with something. But I do believe that, um, we should be allowing some sort of trailer to be parked at the house. If we, if it's only boat trailers, I think we're restricting it to the community. So what I'm going to do, um, I know it's a no on the way it is today, but I'm going to keep going forward. I'm going to gain some, um, some, I'm going to bring some ammo back. I'm going to get some emails from some community response and at a future COW meeting, I might recraft this ordinance. Like I said, to allow those enclosed trailers with certain restrictions. Because I do believe, uh, firmly that that is something that this community could use. And it's not going to be a detriment to how it affects the value or the look. So, uh, at some point I will bring it back again and, uh, thank you all for taking the time to listen to this today.
Thank you. Councilmember Cosden?
Thank you. I think I just heard you say, councilmember, that you'll recraft the ordinance. But I just want to be clear, there's no more staff time being spent on this, correct?
I'm not going to use staff time on this. What I'm going to do is I'm going to gain some more citizens', uh, responses and come back at another COW meeting with, um, and hopefully look for a second, but have more ammo in my tool belt than what I had for this one. So I hope to bring that back at a later date.
Councilmember Long?
Yeah, same thing. I was just curious on the rules. I mean, you asked if we would let him continue. And then I think the consensus was no and he said he would. So I was just wanting to make sure that we weren't going to continue to redraft, um, the ordinance. It sounds like that, he just clarified that that wasn't his intent. So, um, if it, if he wants to do whatever it is that he said and come back and ask for a second, that's one thing. I just wanted to clarify that that wasn't the way that we were moving forward. Thank you.
Councilmembers, thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to go on record and, and, and commend you for trying to, um, you know, help out, uh, citizens that have approached you, uh, with a, a, a need that they feel. As a, as a council, we've got, we've got, you know, 210, 215,000 people. Um, and so we have to consider the people that would be affected by, uh, the ordinance other than those that would have the trailer and whatnot. And so, but, but I, uh, I commend you for, for the work that you've put in and trying to, uh, and trying to help citizens that, that, um, that have the need with other, other trailers and whatnot. So I just wanted you to know that, that I felt that way.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Councilmember Hayden?
Yes, Mayor.
Councilmember Hayden? Uh, yeah, I just wanted to, uh, make sure that as a council collectively, uh, you know, we're clear on what our, what our next steps are. It sounds like a majority of the council, uh, wants to leave things as is, uh, just like some of the other council members had mentioned. That we are not interested in wasting any staff time, uh, or the city attorney's office to move this forward. Uh, I can appreciate, uh, councilmember Welsh. I know this has, uh, been something that, uh, you've talked about since day one, since you've gotten here. Uh, but we make decisions, uh, as a collective council. And any further, uh, approach to this particular topic, I think in the future you would need to get another second uh, for any other type of action, uh, on parking regulations, uh, within, uh, the residential area involving trailers or boat trailers. I just want to make sure that I think all of us, all eight of us are perfectly clear that any other type of, uh, initiative, you would have to come back and get a second from another council member. Uh, involving that, that topic specifically. That's how I, I see it. And I just wanted to, uh, see if the rest of council, uh, agrees with that.
Yeah, Mayor, the point was made that if, uh, if, if, if this moved forward, you would have to come back and get another second. That no staff time would be used currently for, for any rewrite of this ordinance. So you'd, you'd basically have to start over, um, with it. So councilmember Shepherd?
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, mention to, uh, citizens that have these, uh, storage problems that we have worked in the past on some relief. People are allowed now, if they have the space, to have detached garages on their property if they need additional storage. So that is, uh, another option that's available if you have the space. So you can look into a detachable garage. Thank you.
Councilmember Welsh?
I just want to thank, uh, the legal staff that worked with me on this and the time that they put in. I think what we crafted, um, I thought was good. I thought that we're working together was great and we were working on it. Uh, I do want to let this council know, I, I do not plan on using any more, uh, city time. That is 100%. Uh, everything I do from here on out will be done on my own time and with residents. So, uh, just to make that 100% clear, I, I don't think I need legal anymore, um, uh, on this. So, um, don't worry about that. But I did want to thank them for the time that we spent on this and, uh, trying to, what I felt was good for the community. So thank you for your time and, and writing such, what I think was great legislative, uh, items. But, uh, apparently not everyone else agreed. So thank you again.
Thank you. Uh, before we move on to the quarterly reports, does anyone want to take a break or do you want to move forward? We're good? Okay. Uh, item 4B2 is Quarterly Grants Management.
I'm here.
Report. Mr. Mason?
Yep, getting the setup. I'll be right with you in a minute. Mark Mason, Financial Services Director. A quick, uh, briefing on the quarterly reports for the second quarter. We applied for 10 grants. I'll go through those in shortly. We have zero pending awards at this time. We have, uh, three grants that were awarded, uh, and those three specifically were. We have three grants that were awarded, and those three specifically were a watershed planning grant, $150,000 grant, $50,000 match, the Verizon tree planting Arbor Day, $31,500. City council has accepted that already, as well as the JAG grant, the Edward Bernie Justice Assistance Grant, which is countywide grant, $105,000, and the city council has accepted that one as well. Some of the grants that we did apply for, some efficiency and lighting conservation block grant for Ball Field Lighting, North One Utilities Extension Project, $11.9 million for irrigation, highway safety sub-grant, impaired driving, the Victims of Crime Act, VOKA grant that we apply for every year, as well as the WCIND grant or the West Coast Inland Navigation for a boating grant. The State Water Quality Assistance Grant, the SWAG grant, we applied for it. It was for irrigation for North One. West, we did not, it was not awarded to us. I wanted to make sure that you knew that it was not awarded to us. And we applied for four different park grants with TDC for a variety of the parks that were in the process of building. We have 72 grants that are outstanding, total awarded $106 million, with available to draw $66 million with 12 grants outstanding with development services, the both of which is the, both the CDBG as well as state housing grants. We have a number of fire grants outstanding as well, eight grants. Total police grants, we have 12 police grants outstanding, $1.6 million. Parks has a number of grants outstanding as well, $2.3 million, nine active grants. Public Works has 16 active grants outstanding, the majority of which are all sidewalk-type grants with FDOT. And of course, we have utilities with 12 active grants outstanding, the American Rescue Act being the largest one. And we have three, and now, just yesterday, but we were awarded the fourth and final expedited grant for the utility, I mean, for FEMA, for Hurricane Ian. It's a $9 million grant. We'll be receiving $4.5 million of that here shortly. We just entered the draw request for that. So we have, we have a total of three active grants that are outstanding for FEMA. And then we'll have a fourth one with the next report. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. Any discussion from the dais from Mr. Mayor? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to item 4B3, Quarterly Parks Go-Bond Update. Mr. Klingon.
Yep. Thank you. Paul Klingon, Director of Capital Improvements. Parks update. Here's a quick summary. There's four parks that are open. We have two parks that are near completion and construction, two that have just started, three close to bidding in April, May, and June, and two that are still in permitting. So Gia Frida Park is open, and you can see that we were under budget for Gia Frida Park. Del Prado Linear Park is open, and again, under budget as far as the money that was set aside, including contingency. Gator Trails Park, we're open, again, under budget. Gator Trails Park is open, but there's some additional scope that we're looking at. Replace the trees damaged by Hurricane Ian, add some shade over existing benches, and add shade over existing exercise equipment. So that will, some of that contingency will be used up for that. Cultural Park is open. We do have the ribbon cutting, official ribbon cutting, April 21st. That too has some additional scope that we're working on, replacing the trees damaged by Hurricane Ian, adding new trees. Arbor Day Foundation Grant I have completed, but actually, some of the trees are in. And actually, today's, the final trees are being planted as we speak. Adding some shade over existing benches, had the exercise equipment with shade. Installing the perimeter sidewalks is completed, and curving and landscaping the three medians in front of the park. So again, that would use some of the remaining contingency on that project to pay for this equipment. Sands Park, substantial completion April, proposed ribbon cutting in May. Joe Koviel Park, substantial completion in May, proposed ribbon cutting in June. Yellow Fever Creek, that's just starting, we're about that 20, 25% complete. That completion date is November 2023. Lake Kennedy, we just had the groundbreaking, so that's, the completion is June of 2024. Crystal Lake, we're proposed bidding this month. Festival Park, proposed bidding in May. Lake Mead, proposed bidding in May or June of this year. And Tropicana Park, we're still waiting on permits. We have the Eagle Nest take permit pending. And the Yacht Club, still waiting on the permits for that project. The GMP bidding is on hold, and right now, the focus is we're obtaining costs for demolition of the existing buildings for FEMA reimbursement. Any questions?
Any discussion? Paul, what's the update on the boathouse? Are they reopened? Are they close to reopening? Have we figured out parking for them out there?
I'll defer that to the city manager.
The boathouse is in permitting right now for their tiki-cheeky, as well as the guardrails and handrails. So they're still working through the permitting process. As far as the general grounds go, Parks and Public Works staff have been working on cleaning the parking lot, securing the site, putting up security fencing, and moving the contractors that are utilizing the site for hurricane recovery to safer places away from the main travel areas. But the boathouse needs to have permits and inspections before they can open.
Okay. Councilmembers, thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to commend you on the work that's been being done. Everyone would have liked for it to have happened quicker than it had, but, you know, the number of challenges presented themselves that no one could control. So with what we could control, the outcome is, I think, awesome for the community, the quality of the parks, the thought that went into it, the construction coming in, at or under budget. I think this has greatly enhanced our community, and I just wanted to let you know that we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other discussion? All right, we'll move on to item 4B4, Quarterly Capital Improvement Updates. Utilities are first. Mr. Pearson.
Thank you. Give me one moment to pull up that presentation.
If you want to take a five-minute or 10-minute recess, I'll get all the presentations loaded up.
Okay, they're not loaded yet?
I'm ready.
He's ready? Okay.
All right. Good morning, everyone. Jeff Pearson, Utilities Director. The first project I'd like to speak about this morning is the Kaluza Hatchet Connect project. The current status of this project is that the Everest Parkway Pipeline, running from Horton Park to Everest Water Rec Facility, is substantially complete. They are working at the plant, doing the yard piping and the manifold system. The sub-aquous horizontal directional drill construction is underway. They are currently putting the initial carrier pipes on both sides of the river. They just started on the Fort Myers side yesterday. The schedule was somewhat delayed due to the bid protest. We lost about six months. We were originally going to be completed this past January. Now we're looking at completion, substantial completion in September or October of this year. Both projects are presently under budget. The next steps would be to do potentially a ribbon cutting on or before the end of this year. The next project is the Southwest Water Reclamation Facility Operations and Maintenance Building Project. This project is nearing completion. The schedule was extended to May due to damage from Hurricane Ian. There will be a project closeout change order. There were a number of changes that were needed by our Information Technology Department. And the next steps, of course, will be to complete construction in May and have a ribbon cutting. Next project is the reservoir pipeline and pump station. We received 100% design plans last month. Projects on schedule, on budget. We will complete the engineering in this month. We hope to bid the project this fall and complete the project in the spring of 2025 or before. Next project is the Master Pump Station 100 and the Sewer Force Main for the CRA. Currently, the project is under construction. It's on schedule and on budget. The master pump station was delayed. We just received a bid for $11.8 million, and that will be coming soon to council for consideration. The next steps are to, of course, to award that contract and to complete construction the summer of next year. Next project is Palm Tree Water Main and Force Main Improvements. That project is currently under construction, and we've completed a number of items already, including the horizontal directional drills under the canals. Projects on schedule, under budget. We anticipate completion in November of this year. Next project is the North RO Plant Supply Wells. That project, the design is underway. We're on schedule, on budget. Next steps will be to complete the engineering design and then bid the individual well projects. The next project is the Pine Island Road West Corridor Utilities. The status of that is, we've issued an RFP for design, and that just went to the SAC yesterday. And we recommended an engineering firm for that that will be coming to council soon. And the design, schedule, and budget are to be determined. Next steps are to initiate design this summer and complete construction in the fall of 2025. Next project is a 5 million gallon expansion for the Southwest Water Rec Facility and Transmission Force Main along Veterans Parkway. The status of that project is, we've selected a design consultant. The SAC has. The CMAR and RFP are in the procurement process. The schedule is to be completed by December of 2025, and complete that project then. Some of the projects that we've completed over the past year are the Pine Island Road Reclaim Water Tanks and Booster Station. Great project. Weir 29, which is going to provide us, is providing us about 900 million more gallons of water storage in Basin 4, which is the city's largest freshwater basin. And we have completed the Nicholas Parkway West and East Water Main Improvements. We were substantially complete with those two parts of these projects. Of course, there's still some remaining paving work that has to be done. Those were completed in October of last year and January of this year. That's all I have.
Jeff, do you know the status of the, and thank you for that report. Do you know the status of the pump house out of Palmetto Pine on what the timetable on that might be?
The pump house?
We're going to connect to the pipeline out there. Is that for you? I'll see that.
That wouldn't be mine, sir. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to Public Works.
So good morning. Perses Zambrano, Interim Public Works Director. And yes, that project is part of my presentation. Okay, so I'm going to go through the list of 12 items or projects that Public Works is working on. The first one is Sun Trail, which happens to be in the news today. The governor just signed legislation that will increase funding for Sun Trail. And as you know, this is a state-funded project that ties the entire system for a multi-use path through the state. And the city is very lucky to be part of the initial segments to be built. So segment number one, phase one, was completed in February. We're working with the Communications Office to have ribbon cutting. Phase two, which is already designed and is ready to go out for bid, we got the grant for fiscal year 2025, which starts July 2024. So pretty soon, we can start the process for construction of phase two. Phase three is the segment from Del Prado to 24th Avenue, and will be the last segment within the city. That one is, the design is funded through the grant, and we're under negotiation with the consultant. I want to show you some pictures, how it looks. First, multi-use bridge built in the Cape. And as part of this project, we took the opportunity to do the widening of Kismet Parkway by the school property. We got an agreement with the school. They gave us the right of way. We built the two lanes that were a missing link as part of the roadway network in the city, so that was completed. So now we move on to the road rehabilitation program, which includes the resurfacing, the 6.5 million. So the maps in the slide shows you what we have planned for fiscal year 2023 for the local road resurfacing, the major road resurfacing, and also the pavement preservation. All these programs are supposed, are planned to start resurfacing in May, the spot paving in June, and the pavement preservation by late summer of this year. So so far, we're on a schedule and under budget. Nicholas Parkway East and West, as Jeff stated, utilities component is Nicholas Parkway East and West, as Jeff stated, utilities component is completed. We're finishing on the pavement. The Nicholas Parkway West is completed, closed out. The Nicholas Parkway East is still in progress. The due date is this month. It most likely will be delayed. We're monitoring the situation. So, we're meeting with the contractor and, you know, trying to fix certain items. Alley Reconstruction, this is a project that is currently under construction. Completion date is, stayed expected by May of this year is on a schedule and under budget. Median Landscaping Program, those that are in the CTIC, you're, we're very well familiar where we are with these projects. Rose Garden is under construction. So far, the completion date per the contract is July of this year. Chiquita, completion date is June this year. Embers Parkway and Country Club, for both of those projects, we have consultants on board to do the access management component that will allow for extension of the medians by restricting access to adjacent streets. So, we're in the engineering part of the access management. Once that is completed, we will move toward the landscaping design. So, we will keep you posted on those. So, here you have a picture of Rose Garden where they are, the trees were delivered. We have an owl situation in one of the medians that we just have to wait until the season passes. There is, this is the other project, the Chiquita, which are, which is in the demo phase of the project. Sidewalk Program. The sidewalks that were to be built in-house are mostly completed. Those that were going through the, a new delivery method, the design build, we have one proposal that was received. Yesterday, we met at this SAC and we, we're looking into next steps. We opened the bid yesterday. We are under, doing an evaluation of the bid. And again, we only received one proposal. Water Quality Projects, the 10 bubble curtains, they suffer some damage, the electric components during the hurricane. So, we're procuring their replacement parts and moving forward to restating the setup of the bubble curtains. Palmetto Pines, this is the project that you were asking, council member. This is part of the water quality projects. This is, this project is behind schedule. The reason is that the city, working with the golf course, we changed the design. So, there were permitting delays. And then, the contract, the consultant suffers severe hurricane damage in his business. So, the project is delayed at this moment. Bimini Basin, Morey Field, as feedback we received from council, we went from design-build to design and permit only. So, the package is ready for solicitation. It was revised with this new direction and is ready for solicitation in procurement. Chiquita Boulevard North Widen, and this is another project that was part of Sun Trail. We just took the opportunity to finish also the design of this intersection. We improved the design so four lanes of Kismet meet Chiquita in a more organic configuration. And also, we got, on Chiquita North, we got right away from the school district, it's the same property. So, we have all the 100 feet right away needed for eventual for, for lining of that segment. Under Stormwater Operational Projects, we have the Hancock Bridge Parkway Drainage Improvements. The design is in progress. This project is on their schedule, on a schedule and under budget. And right now, we're looking at the options presented by the consultant to move forward with, to complete the design. Also, the Stormwater Staff, we do this in-house. We go through our catch basins and we start cleaning up during the dry season to be ready for the rainy season. As you can see in this slide, the aerial shows in one color those catch basins on Santa Barbara that has been assessed, they've been vacuumed. And those in orange, the red colors, they already were completed. And the ones in orange is, are in progress. So, it tells you we track which catch basins we do maintenance. Property Management, they, they install the temporary trailer at the skate park and at City Centrum. They're working on those two projects and they're, the one on Development Services is there just with the final touch to, for completion. So, they're on a schedule, on budget, based on a monthly list. Our survey crew, we have an in-house survey crew, was asked to do a survey of the Carol Dog Point, which is that extreme of conservation land by south of, across from Tarpon Point. On the other side of Tarpon Point is that like pointed, pointing piece of land. So, our crew, using the latest technology, they completed the survey for that area. And interestingly enough, the slide to your right shows a historical pin, pin that was found by our surveyors. They were so excited. So, it's confirmed that that is something that was put in place in the early 1900s when they initially surveyed this area in Florida. So, we have that historical element here. More information, they had a lot of fun doing that project. Also, our survey group, they're going through North One at the time, in anticipation of the utilities. They, they're preserving the existing benchmarks. So, they remain, they remain there during the project, the UEP project. They also perform a D and D Marina Boundary Survey, Survey. And this is something that is helping the application by the city to get some slips transfer from that marina to the yacht club. And finally, this is a three-year project. We're working with the Department of Environmental Protection to have our benchmarks set up in a new reference system. So, we're really updating and modernizing our benchmark citywide. And that project is moving forward, 75% complete and is on schedule and under budget. If you have any questions, I will be happy.
Thank you, Perses. Any, any questions, council member Stanky?
Thank you. You've been busy.
Hi, staff, yes.
They're all, they're all great projects. I just wanted to make note of one thing on Slide 6 and thank you. And in the hopes, in years to come, we could continue this with the, with the Road Rehabilitation Program. By, by doing that during the months when we're not as heavily trafficked by our visitors, it certainly helps our citizens make their way through the city, you know, to and from work, to and from shopping, entertaining, dining. So, anytime that, that we can keep our roads in the best condition they can be and do that during a time when there's less traffic on the road is highly appreciated by all. And I just wanted to make note of that and hope for it in the future as well. Thank you.
Thank you, council.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes, on the Sun Trail. If you see or notice any safety issues for making alterations, does, where does that funding come from?
Now, maintenance is on us. Okay, but we are in, we are in excellent communication with the Sun Trail Program because we deliver.
Does the Sun Trail Program, because it should be called the Full Sun, Sun Trail, is there, is there any funding availability for adding shade to that trail?
Not at this time. And that's a matter that, yes, we're bringing forth discussion.
And the other question I have is on the future median work. Are we going to be hiring architects for design? Are we going to do it in-house with, with the pallets that we've already created to try to save some money?
A combination of the two. So, we will follow the pallets and we will hire consultants. Right now, we don't have the staff to do the designing house.
Well.
I don't know if the city manager wants to.
Is the pallets basically are already pre-designed? Wouldn't we be able to pick a pallet that works for whatever location it is?
So, one of the things that I'll be reviewing as part of this budget presentation forthcoming to council, with the change in the Green Book Design Standards, we now need to do or we need to perform access management, which is putting in the curbing, deciding, you know, figuring out how long turn lanes need to be, how we're going to reroute traffic in neighborhoods. We have to design the irrigation systems based on what we've seen in the last couple of medians that we've advanced. Those costs are pretty significant. I have had some discussion, brief, very high-level discussion with our finance director about the possibility of bringing on a position to basically do this in-house. And instead of paying $80,000, you know, per median just to do access management and then another $80,000 to do the landscape, we're doing that on two medians now and we're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars. And then, we're only going to have that engineer for a brief period of time to do that work. So, I, I have begun the discussion of looking at a cost-benefit analysis where we could have an engineer do this in-house, access management, and then follow right up with the landscape design. And then, when they're not working on an active project that we have, similar to what we do with our sidewalks and commercial development, we have a block design program where we actually design blocks so that when developers come in, we say, here's how you need to build the sidewalk, urban gutter. We could then advance that same methodology with median landscaping and curbing and access management. We could have somebody in-house who does it full-time and look and see what we need to assess the volume of work and, and how much funding we could save. If our intent is to continue to fund median landscaping and access management at the level we're doing now or enhance it, I think we could certainly see savings. But conversely, if we're looking at paring it down, then it's kind of a balance. If you may recall, we had presented before at a CTEC, the, a comparison, compare and contrast analysis of performing in-house landscaping medians versus outsourcing. And, and the margin was, was narrow. It was real, really, I mean, we're talking, we were, it was a 5% difference in the cost. If, and I had said a year ago, if costs continue to escalate in the private sector, it may be such that it, it would be beneficial to do them in-house. We could certainly look at that again and have a small dedicated crew to actually not only be designing them in-house. We have the curbing machine, then we can shift right into the landscaping itself. So, these are definitely things that we're going to explore. And, you know, it's good, we just need to put together some analysis.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Saying no, thank you, Perses. We'll move on to Capital Improvements update. Mr. Klingon?
Thank you, Paul Klingon, Director of Capital Improvements. Get the, thank you. Again, the Office of Capital Improvements, our primary focus is the UEPs, Parks, Go Bond Construction, major city facilities, any other projects assigned with the, with the UEPs rolling. We're estimating 250 million per year in projects. Again, the UEP, you've seen this slide before, North One, North Two, and Six, Seven. We are giving notice to proceed in April for construction of North One West. The design for North One East is approximately 90% complete. The plan would be to bring that back probably in about a year once we're into a year of construction on the West. We got the North Three Design RFP, that's pending. And that, that North Three Design will be happening in the next year. Fire Station 13, we had the groundbreaking. So, construction started in April. The Police Training Facility, we have the, the GMP is in. It's 14.5 million for the construction cost of the police training facility. That will be on a council agenda in May for approval. The Fire Training Facility, we also had that GMP come in. That's 11.6 million. And again, that'll be on a council agenda for approval in May. New Fleet Facility, the study is wrapping up. We're planning to come back at the next COW at the end of April to present the details on the study, where the facility will be located, costs, number of bays, that type of thing. Facility's master plan is approximately 25% complete, looking at the space needs of all the city departments. 140 bridges we have, the, the study is, is complete. We looked at prioritization. And so, we'll be coming back at a future COW to explain what the plan is to repair and possibly replace some of these bridges moving forward. The bridges we have are safe. So, these would be planned replacements and/or rehabilitation to extend the life. 28 Weirs, that's approximately 95% complete. All the field work is done. We just have a final meeting to, to look at the prioritization. We'll be working with, closely with utilities and Public Works to start upgrading these and possibly replacing some of these, making them automated while we do that. JC Park, we're finalizing the design permitting and bidding fees with Panini to move forward with that. D and D Boat Ramp, that, that project's still on hold as there's still discussions with Lee County going on with the D and D Boat Ramp. Fire Station 10, we have chosen BSSW Architects. So, presently negotiating with them for the design and permitting of Fire Station 10. Oasis Multipurpose Athletic Field, we have the design and permitting RFPs are due April 18th. Skate Park Building Replacement, the design and permitting RFPs are due in May. And we'll get a engineer on board on that. And we have the Indolusia Boulevard Extension. That's a $15 million dollar project. We do have four design and permitting firms that we received that those are being evaluated. We will be coming to council at a future COW to discuss Parcel One as far as obtaining that, that land. We do have all the land on each side of that for the project. And miscellaneous projects we're working on, Aquatic Community Center Study, that RFP is in process. The Sina Vista Module Restroom, that will be completed in June. The Burn Store Boat Ramp Sewer Improvements, that'll be completed in June. And we continue to provide technical support related to the South Spreader Waterway Environmental Improvement and Sustainability Program Permit. Any questions?
All right, any questions for Mr. Klingon?
All right, any questions for Mr. Kling? Kling saying, saying none, thank you.
Okay.
For the presentation. We'll move on to item 4B, Five Quarterly Communications Report.
Good morning, City Council. My name is Melissa Mickey, and I'm the Communications Manager for the City of Cape Coral. And I'm here to do, it's really our first quarterly report. So thank you. Today, I'm going to go over some campaigns, events, and projects that we're currently working on for this quarter, a little bit about marketing, social media, public relations, and some of our measurables. And then I'll get into 311, which is now under the Office of Communications. So we have four new employees. And also, we'll go into the 311 Topics Tracker, so show you how to use that. So currently, our campaigns that we have working on right now, which you are all familiar with, the first one is Know Your City. And that campaign is an informational campaign. Let me see if I can pause this real quick. It provides insight into our city leadership, and it features about a one and a half to two-minute video on each of our city council members, a city manager, assistant city manager, as well as some posts about the city of Cape Coral. We've included information on the campaign in our City Ease newsletter, on social media, Facebook, Instagram, our electronic city sign, as well as Cape Coral TV. Each of the, each of your videos has run for a week on social media, and then it's going to be going on for a few months living on Cape Coral TV. And I'm just going to show everyone an example. Are not. Is there volume? Is up to me? Sorry. Oh, no, it's up all the way. So it might be the, and back. That's okay. John, with One Pro, if you can hear me, can you turn on the volume so that council can actually hear the video?
It's coming out behind you.
Okay.
Included funding for sidewalks in the city budget.
Wow. You're enunciating pretty well. I like that.
I've lived in Cape Coral for 39 years, all my life, and I've been a council member for seven years. I worked in direct marketing before I came onto the city council. I've since switched career paths, and I work for Pace Center for Girls, and I'm working on my master's degree in public administration. As a young mother here in Cape Coral, and as a lifelong resident, I've seen the population here grow. I think it quadrupled since the time I was born.
Sorry, it's not showing on your screen. So I apologize.
Well, that's okay. You can, you can move on.
You get the gist of it.
We appreciate all your work on, on those, and I think we all enjoy doing them.
So, one of the other campaigns we have is called the Open for Business Campaign. It's a campaign that we started back in November of 2022. It doesn't look like this is being shown either. And I don't know what, what happened with the disconnection, unfortunately. So after Hurricane Ian, it was part of economic and business development. It was an initiative to showcase Cape Coral businesses that are open in the wake of the storm. At the time, we were receiving a lot of questions from visitors and vacationers and some of our snowbirds about whether or not they could come down and still visit Cape Coral after Hurricane Ian. And my marketing specialist contacted several of the businesses that were voted best of the best of Cape Coral, and we created social media stories on them. It ran for several months into the end of March. The campaign lives on social media, on Facebook and Instagram. We got a lot of really good feedback from the restaurants and businesses that were involved in the campaign. And I'm sorry that it's, at least you can see it. You can't actually hear the music. This one was actually posted on St. Patrick's Day, so it's a really fun music in the background. And then also, we're working on with Code regarding the mobile food vendors ordinance, which was recently passed. This mostly lives, this is not a social media thing, nothing to hear or watch. We do have a social webpage dedicated to it. We have a graphic that we created that will, is also a part of a brochure that code enforcement can hand out. We sent out a press release and have participated in some local news coverage on the topic, crafted and disseminated an email to the mobile food vendors. So we got a public records request with a list of all of the mobile food vendors registered in our county, and we are going to go ahead and do that with some of the outside counties as well, because of course, those, they are mobile, and they can come here as well. So we want to make sure that call here in Charlotte Counties are aware. So we do have the brochure created for code enforcement and the webpage on the topic that includes, and we will include it in our website pop-up and an article in our May on the Move Periodical. I believe it goes into effect April 25th. Some upcoming campaigns we're working on as our hurricane season, our mantra this year is be prepared. I think previously it was, are you prepared? I think a lot of our residents are, or at least want to be. So this is a multifaceted campaign. We are working with emergency management. I'm going to scroll up so you can see the webpage that we have created. It's one of the buttons on our homepage. Specifically, staff from emergency management, Jason Oriana and Caroline Breones, they're working with us to kick off the hurricane season with a Hurricane Informational Expo. We're going to hold that on May 31st at the Mercola. It'll be an inaugural, an inaugural Cape Coral Hurricane Preparedness Expo, where people can meet the city representatives and some local organizations. And we will provide information to help them prepare for before, during, and after the storm. This event is open to the residents of Cape Coral, and it is a free event. The campaign will include social media posts, a video on how to create your own hurricane kit on social, social media, and Cape Coral TV, an informational town hall, actually seminar, that will be June, I think it's the 20th is what we're going to be aiming for, for residents, that will also be livestreamed, press release, participation in local media stories. We have an art contest that's going on right now. So if you have kids, if you have grandkids, friends, neighbors, encourage them to, you know, be a part of that art contest and send in one of their drawings. If you go onto the webpage, actually, I'll scroll down a little bit further so you can see, they can, I think they have to do it by this Saturday, but if they turn something in, we can, we're going to use that picture as a part of our campaign. And that is the art contest for students. We also have a series of lunch and learn sessions on various topics related to the hurricane prep that will go on during the hurricane season, and those are going to be put on by emergency management. We're also working with utilities on the irrigation ordinance, teaming up with them to assist them in educating the public regarding that ordinance that will go before council later this month. And then the annual fertilizer campaign is a push that we start in May and usually runs through September. This should take us two. Yes, be wise, don't fertilize. It consists, the, the campaign consists of a webpage, a website pop-up, articles in our city e-newsletter, and On the Move Periodical, social media posts distributed to all Cape Coral schools, electronic message signs on veterans in Cape Coral Parkway, and two bus stop benches, the Realtor Newsletter and signage, and bag stuffers at some of the local stores, as well as a press release. And we always work with our local media outlets to engage our media partners. And then ongoing, we have Unlicensed Contractors, something that we go, that goes year-round. It's a campaign, definitely had a big push after Hurricane Ian, because there was an influx of scammers in our area, and we want our residents to always be aware of them. We don't want them to get scammed. It's an ongoing, what I call an evergreen campaign. So it lives on social media. We post on it year-round. On our website, we have the webpage. It's always articles in On the Move, or maybe ads, our city e-newsletters, website pop-up, and we participate in local media stories when they want to do stories on the topic. We also have an ongoing push for rental registration. Rental registration is also what I like to consider one of our evergreen topics. It includes information on, we post on it year-round on social media. We have information on the website, in our On the Move Periodical e-newsletters, website pop-ups, and we send information to local Realtor Association. They include it in their newsletter annually. And whenever they have it in their newsletter, about a month later, I check with Code, and there's always a big influx of people registering their rentals. So it's very helpful. So events that we have had for this first quarter of fiscal year 2023, in January, we, so we, we work with our amazing special events team, and I say amazing because there's only like three or four of them, and they put together all of the city events, and I just am always impressed. And we work with them to provide varying levels of support to each of the, the events that they put on. So our work for events includes more marketing specialists working with them to create graphics and logos for the events, such as music and Art Walk, Bike Night. They create posters, flyers, social media posts, Facebook livestreams, create videos, and we also send out press releases on all the events, both advertising them. And then, of course, if traffic flow is affected, we send out releases, press releases, notifying people of that information as well. We also create, and we hand out city swag. We're present at most of the events. We take pictures and post on social media, and then we also take video for our use as, and of course, then you've seen the, the events where we play a larger role, such as the tree lighting, the ground breakings, and ribbon cuttings, and that type of thing. And then this just lists the events that we've had this, this past quarter, several of them you guys have been to. And then some projects that we've got working on, and these are by no means all of the projects that we have, just some bigger ones that I just want to make you aware of. Our work on these projects starts when we meet with the department, which we consider to be our customer, and then we determine their needs. And then our work ranges from creation, coordination, organizing, proofing, taking and selecting photos, creating logos and/or graphics. For Parks and Rec, we have the Summer Camp Guide, which is now on the website. And we select the photos, we help them, you know, make the front cover. And then, of course, with all of the information inside of it, we organize that and get it in there for them. And then, when it's being distributed, sometimes it gets printed, we send it to print as well. And then, of course, the Activity Guide, which looks very similar, it's also on our website at Parks and Rec, and I believe we just finished up the one for the summer. This is not the summer one. This beautiful photo on the front cover was actually taken by one of my marketing specialists. She's also a photographer, Sarah Newcombe. And then if you open up inside of it, our marketing coordinator, Michelle Dean, coordinates and works with Parks and Rec staff to put all of this beautiful information into this magazine. We also have been working with economic and business development. We work with her, well, I say them, but it's her, so regularly. We recently worked with Sharon to create a flyer, and it's not working for me. And then also, a project map, for some reason, all the links aren't necessarily working, so I apologize. And then, one of our, we're very excited about is the Cape Coral Quest app. So I'm not sure if many of you, I know, that Councilmember Steinkie has, has heard of it. Very excited about this. We get a lot of traction. We call them questers, and these people show up now at City Hall to, you know, redeem their points for merchandise. So you go into the app, you can sign up through the website. So far, we've actually, we just launched it in, I believe it was February. We've had 2,600 signups, 3,300 check-ins. And so people, there's 30 different locations that they have to check in to participate in the app. They're businesses, some of them are, are parks. We came up with 30 different riddles, our staff did, that you have to go in, find that, the riddle helps you find the code. You enter the code, you get points. Prizes claimed, 196 prizes. I have heard some council members say that they would like one of the prizes, so I can look into maybe getting you guys some of our fun swag. We've created a really neat turvis and a bag. And one of the really exciting things that just came out just about a week or two ago is one of our partners, Sun Splash, has now said that anyone participating in the app through, it runs through November, anyone who participates and goes to all 30 locations will get a free season pass to Sun Splash. So we have had some people redeem those, and they'll, they'll give them to you throughout the, the time that it's running through November. Then with November, when it, when it ends, there's going to be two people who get a night, two nights, I think, at the Westin. So we've had just a really great amount of participation, and we're going to continue this hopefully into next year, and we'll change the locations up. Number of people that are entered into the Westin drawing are 62, and the number who, of people who've completed the Cape Quest and received the Sun Splash season pass are 16. So that's pretty, it's pretty exciting, because that's 30 different locations, and they're always happy when they come in. It's very fun. Oh, those were my other two things that showed up. So videos, one of the videos that I did want to show you, and I hope that it's working for me, is the CRA commercial. They had actually asked, the CRA had asked for us to send them a commercial just to show that the area of the CRA is open for business. Currently, they just want to put it on social media, and so that's where it is. And that, that actual commercial was created by our, one of our public information specialists, Kaitlin Pearson. She's recently married, so it's now Kaitlin Mullen. But she's, those usually take several days to actually start to finish getting the video, editing it, sometimes at least a week or so to actually come to completion, just so you're, not everyone has an idea of that. They think, oh, you've shot the video today. We're going to get the video today. This is the Pet of the Month. We do this each month with the mayor. It was one of the--
I'm Mayor John Gunter. This is my good friend this morning, Rocket.
Asked for us to put forward--
He is the Cape Coral Pet of the Month, and he needs your help bonding a great home. Rocket is a six-month-old border collie mix, and he loves to go on long walks. To learn how to help a pet need, please visit Cape Coral Animal Shelter.
And so far, all of the animals that have been featured in those videos with the mayor have all been adopted, so we're very excited to report on that. And then, of course, a really exciting event that we have upcoming on Earth Day is our Cape Coral Cleanup. This is now showing on several local TV channels. It'd be nice if you could hear it.
Calling all Cape Coral residents. We've come a long way since Hurricane Ian, but we need your help to restore the natural beauty of Cape Coral. Join us for Earth Day on April 22nd and take pride in your neighborhood. Contribute to a cleaner, healthier community. Sign up online today at www.capecoral.gov and help us make this the biggest cleanup our city has ever seen.
Some other projects that I'll just touch on, the staircase photo gallery, which I'm sure you've seen, it's very white downstairs. So one of the things that we did was we created the mural that's down there. We have this, the photo gallery that goes up the stairs, which will change probably quarterly. We don't want to get into changing them too frequently, but we'll make sure that those, those photos get changed. The Citizens Academy-- The Citizens Academy, we currently have one going on right now. I wish I could pause these. And, and about 15 people that are a part of it, and they've been very engaged, lots of questions. What happens in the Citizens Academy is you learn a little bit about every department and division at the city. And it's, it runs for eight weeks. There were, I, my understanding is that they had a couple of these prior to, I think, COVID, and then we've just started them. Of course, the first one was supposed to happen in October, and then Hurricane Ian pushed it back. But now we've got one going on right now, and we will have them twice a year. And just to give you a little bit of an idea, we have this short video on it. Keeping a city running is no simple task. It takes all of us, each doing our part. It's less about me and more about we. At the Cape Coral Citizens Academy, learn how we all work hand-in-hand to keep Cape Coral one of the top places to live in Florida. Sign up today and become an ambassador for our city. Together, we are Cape Coral. So procurement, we have assisted them with doing their open house, which was at the end of March, and that of our projects. The Art Center, we helped them with a call to artists. The Media Relations Policy, I've recently updated and put on several media trainings for leads and some leadership staff. And then also, we have the bi-annual citizen survey. It's a survey of our residents that goes on about every two years, and this year is one of those years. So I'm working with, I think it's Polco, to get that rolled out. Marketing, so just our marketing team, you know, I think there's, sometimes have been questions since our office is relatively new. We have three people who are marketing, and they, those marketing specialists specifically work on maintaining our city website, updating webpages, creating graphics and logos, our monthly e-newsletter, the On the Move publication, which is twice a year, and we're changing it this year. It used to be like a newspaper, and I'm, I'm trying something new. And we've created a magazine, and I'm hopeful that that will encourage residents when they get a magazine in their mailbox, that they're actually going to hang on to it, maybe dog ear some pages. So it will have a different look and feel. We also help with the, they work on the Parks and Rec Guides. I think there's four of those each year. The Visitors Convention Bureau and Tourist Development Council. We have someone who sits in on a call with them every week. And then also, we provide at least talking points to the councilmember Steinkie when he goes, and just give them information. Sometimes we'll attend, but usually we leave that up to Economic, Business Development, and Council. We coordinate all of social media. I actually only have one person, he's my primary, I call him my social media extraordinaire. And we have one person in charge of social media, so it's not, and not the office. Citizens Academy, that all lives in our office. It's a big undertaking. We have to schedule it all with all the different departments, advertise it, organize it, and run it. And then they plan the marketing for all of the city initiatives and campaigns. We work with all of the various departments. And then Cape Coral Quest, of course, that creation and advertising and launch. Social media, I just wanted to touch on it briefly. So we have one marketing specialist, as I said, devoted to coordinating our social media. He develops and curates our engaging content for all of the social media platforms that we have, attends events, and produces live social media content, meets with the ancillary facilities. So we have, the city has a lot of different Facebook pages. You know, the Art Center has one, and the Youth Center has one. And so my social media extraordinaire meets with the ancillary facility staff quarterly to ensure that we're maintaining a unified brand voice across our channels, provides and makes sure that we have the right logo, and so he works with them in that. Collaborates with our marketing team to create social media calendar every month, monitors social media channels for trends, he reviews analytics and reports on key metrics, interacts with users and responds to social media messages, inquiries, and comments. And next, we have Public Information. And those are my, I have two people that do media relations and public, public information. So our public information specialists communicate with the public, the media, and other agencies regularly as needed to disseminate timely, accurate information. They develop and curate engaging content for our social media platforms as well. They provide it to the social media extraordinaire, and then he'll, 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 you know, he times it and puts it out there for us. They write and disseminate all of our city press releases. We're averaging now about 20 a month, which is great. We are organizing media events, press conferences, and interviews. There also are a video team. So our two public information specialists happen to also have a background in video, and they work on that for us. They assist with writing talking points for our officials, and they also review analytics and provide curated news content to city employees on a daily basis. I believe all of you received that email as well. So some measurables, just to go over these because they're pretty impressive. For the fiscal year, you know, it goes back to 2019, shows you we were doing about, on a year, annual basis, less than 30 press releases each month, I'm sorry, each year. And in 2023, just the first two quarters, we've put out 154 press releases. In just the second quarter, we've put out 60. For Facebook followers, we continue to, to grow, so we're at over 21,000 now. And website views, we're at more than half of where we are total for last year, at 2.6 million. And Instagram and Twitter, we've got a little over, well, 24, 64 for Instagram, and 62, 29 for Twitter followers. I have more, I have more in the measurables, but I can get in detail if you guys want that. So I'm moving on to 311, our city's call center. And-- The city's call center is comprised of three full-time and one part-time individual. They're a one-stop center, and they process all inquiries by phone and by email. And they like to refer those to themselves as a solution center. A lot of requests or calls that come into them, they're able to solve for residents. It's not always being passed off to someone else. And they don't like to be called a complaint center. So I like, I like their own brand for themselves as a solution center. They're averaging right now like 800 calls a week. And the hottest topics, you could probably guess, but they are Waste Pro and Disaster Debris Removal. And I'm going to show you now. We have a 311 Topics Tracker, and it was just created by IT. It's something very simple and easy to use. It's going to live on our website, it's already there. Council can use it, but residents can use it as well. So it's not specific to, you know, just for your use. So every, anyone can, can use it. It's easy to use, it shows a topic breakdown per district. And I'm going to show you how it, how it works and how to use it. So if we go to the city website, let's see where this takes me. Oh, this takes me right to it. But I'm going to show you really quickly how to, how to find it on the website, because it is very simple. So if you're on our front page, you're just going to scroll down to the 311 Call Center button, and you will select it. And when you look, this has always been here, the Click Your Trash Day. But just below that is a little icon for the Topics Tracker, and it's a link. So if you select the link, it will take you to this page. And you see it says 311 Topic Tracker. So initially, what I'm going to do is I'm just going to hit Select All Districts. And then this date range currently is January 1st through the 31st. If you want to change the date range, let's say I want to change it to March, you're going to need to change the end date before you change the beginning date. And that's only because it's not going to let you leave an end date in January and make a beginning date in March, right? So you're going to go to March, make your end date the 31st, and then you can make your beginning date March 1st. And you'll see beneath that, the number of topics per district is listed. So it shows 470 in District 1, 485 in 2, 428 in 3. And then, of course, there's this map over here that has this big mess of purple dots where all of those locations are. And then the number of topics per, by status. So the top one with the, this number is so small, almost 1,700 tickets is Waste Pro. And then the second one currently is Transportation Maintenance Issues, which actually just bumped out Disaster Debris Removal. So I guess I misspoke earlier because that must have just changed today. For months, it was the other way around. And so what it shows you is that this many, the green actually means that it's closed. This is so big at the top, the Waste Pro one, that you can hover all the way here, and you can see that there is 433 that are actually being actively worked. And then what I'll do is, let's just say that councilmember Steinkie wanted to look at his district. So he would select District 1 only, and then it's a little bit, the purple dots become more manageable. And you can actually, if you hover over the dot, it'll give you an actual address. And this does let you scroll in, but-- It's not letting me-- There we go. So if he wanted to say he, you know, this is his neighborhood, and then he wanted to see what's going on, or maybe a resident is looking, hey, I live here, I want to see what my resident, you know, my neighborhood looks like. And they say, oh, this is going on at this address. And then you can click on that address, and it'll actually tell you what their, what the issue was. So this person called about, something about Waste Pro. Then you can also go to the second page, which will give you the topics per district, and it's just written out. Sort of says, you know, this is how many information requests were called in, how many capital improvement, you know, calls were called in, 283 Waste Pro calls. And if you switch to the next page, it gives you them for the entire, for all of the districts for that date range. So I would, I mean, it's, it's pretty easy to use. If, I would just play around with it. I mean, that's really the best advice that I could give you. Are there any questions? Anything you want me to--
I think you can move on. You get it, it's great.
Awesome. Okay, that's it. That's our quarterly review or report.
Councilmember Steinkie.
Thank you, and Melissa, thank you in your department and for coordinating with our other departments. For anybody that was ever in Sunday School, you've heard the words, hide under a bush will know, I'm going to let it shine. And you're certainly letting our, letting our city shine, in my opinion, more than it ever has before. And being on the TDC for the city, your help, as well as our other departments' help in making sure that our county knew all that was going on. We certainly can leverage their resources for getting this information out to the public. And for the tool that you've just provided us for 311, what a great resource that is for us to better know where to release our resources, our, our, our staff, you know, our, our employees that are out trying to get the jobs done. We know where the hotspots are for certain things. So it, it serves all of us councilmembers well to be able to take a look at what's happening in our district as well as, as in the city. But then also the city manager and staff to know where are the hotspots, what needs to happen where, and we're able to see what's getting better, what, what's being addressed. And so thank you for that tool. I think it'll go a long way in, in helping us get where we want to be.
Thank you.
Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on the 311 tracker or report. What I intend to do is, as we move forward each quarter, when we do the quarterly reports, we'll summarize in a, in a memo with a transmittal on it, showing citywide as well as each district, so that you all have an idea. You can just take a look at it, you don't have to go through this. But then if you do have questions, but what we intend to do moving forward is just provide a summary to you all, so you can just, as we go through this, you'll have that as backup.
Thank you. Councilmember Welsh.
Thank you, Melissa. I know that this department is new, and I'm glad that it's taken off and, and shown that it was definitely one that we needed. There was a couple of things not to kind of go too far into it, but I did notice that it seemed with the 311 calls that my district, District 5, seems to be the most well-behaved with the lowest amount of numbers.
Oh, is it?
And--
I think seven was--
So, and also, I don't know if you know this, I believe that in the Know Your Council videos, I'm not sure if you know which council member received the most views on that. Was that also--
No, I could look into that, I didn't--
I think it was also just--
Are you teeing up yourself again?
I think I was teeing myself up for that. So I got to say, I'm proud of my district, and I'm proud of the city for how, how well we've come along with, with that. So thank you, guys.
Thank you for that revealing report. We really appreciate it. Councilmember Shepherd.
No, I just wanted to say that 311 Tracker is awesome, and I just want to thank this, this, all the staff members that worked and put that together. That is a great tool for, for all of us and for the citizens as well to just know where things are and what we need to target. So it's, I just want to say thank you to the people that put it together.
I agree. That was really our IT department, so I can't take any credit for it at all. Just be able to play with it.
Councilmember Cummings.
Yes, I agree. I love this 311 Topic Tracker. Was this your idea, Mike? Yes, I absolutely love it. So especially going into the future, so we can kind of, yeah, look at all the districts and see who's kind of like lacking behind, and I, I think that's awesome as well. Have you considered also adding on top of this? You're doing a great job. All these add-ons is amazing. The website is looking way better, more up-to-date, easier to navigate through, because there's so much in a city. So I understand this is a big undertaking that you guys are dealing with.
Yes.
So, but I think you guys have done a very great job in a very short amount of time. With so many things that take place, you know, our emails get flooded. You know, hey, this sign, or, 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 you know, it's crooked, we need to stop signing here. And, you know, we're constantly, you know, sending it out to you guys for you to look at. Have you ever thought about adding an app too for people that have an issue in their neighborhood, that they can go right to something like the 311 Topic Tracker, and, and we could kind of see where, what neighborhoods kind of in a disarray, where they still need help, or they're lacking of, which will be a lot easier, I think, for us? I mean, do you think this could be done, especially after seeing the 311 Topic Tracker, which I really, really do like a lot?
We have an app now. Are you saying that within the app, that this data would be visible from within the app? Or are you asking if somebody wants to report an issue, to report through an app?
Through the app.
I believe, I believe we're live with that now. We, at our next quarterly report, we can present that, and, and we can entertain a marketing effort to get the word back out on the city app.
Yeah, that, that would be great, I think.
Okay, we'll do that.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Melissa, thank you for you and your team for lifting the level of communication for our city. The, the residents depend on it, they count on it. Your measurables and your numbers prove that it's working, and thank you again for, for all that you do.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to Item 4B6, Quarterly Economic and Business Development Office Report. Sharon?
Thanks.
I have so many things up and down, sorry. Okay, get out of your way.
Okay, it's before noon, so good morning, everyone. I am going to just go through the report that you have. There were a couple of slides that I added that are updates to the presentation, one of them being a, an application that we have on the website. And so I wanted to add that under Activities, and then expand on a couple of things that were already in the report. So I'll go through the key economic indicators, our construction activity, the business retention, attraction, and expansion projects we have going, and marketing and activities. So for our key economic indicators, you'll see for unemployment rates that February of 2023, we were at 2.7%, so we are trending down in our employment rates. I put an extra column there for last year, so you could see how we're comparing for the same period in our prior year. So in February 2022, we were at 3.1%. And to compare to Fort Myers, Lee County in Florida, the state of Florida in its entirety, you'll see that the unemployment rate for Fort Myers was 3.2%. Lee County, 2.8%. And Florida, 2.5%. So we're kind of ranging around in the middle, faring better than Fort Myers, a little bit slightly better in Lee County, but slightly higher than over the entire state. So here I am providing you the vacancy rates. At our last COW meeting, it was requested by the mayor and I believe some of the other council members to have some comparisons for Southwest Florida and our other cities in terms of where they are in their vacancy rates, and then also in our most populated cities. So you'll see for Cape Coral, our retail vacancy rate at 1.8% is on the very low end for vacancies compared to some of our other cities in Southwest Florida. Punta Gorda is right around that same rate at 1.7%. The other ones are a bit higher. For our office vacancy, at 2.5%, again, we're on the lower end. Punta Gorda also, in that office space, very similar. And our industrial is at 0.9%. And that is lower than a lot of our comparison cities. Punta Gorda is at 0.5%. So I thought it would be helpful, there were, I think, Councilwoman Cummings, you asked about what the comparable rates were. And so I thought, in addition to some of our other cities, that I would give you some context for the historical rates. And in retail, the historical average vacancy is 5.3%. So certainly a very big difference. Office was 9, 9.3% and industrial, 8%. So when you look at our industrial average, these numbers are very low in terms of our vacancy. And just something for you to have as a perspective. So we'll continue on with vacancy and looking at the most populated cities. And you'll see there's a, a range in retail ranging from 2.7% up to 4.4% office. There are some higher rates at nine, 10.5% and as low as 4%. Industrial in the range of 1.85 and 3.9. So again, we're faring much better in terms of our vacancy rates than some of our surrounding cities. And for our construction activity, you'll see here for our retail construction that we have delivered 339,333 square feet for the past eight quarters. There is 132,000 square feet that's under construction now. And in the pipeline, as far as proposed square footage for retail, we're looking at 125,399. So still solid square footage in the pipeline in terms of what's coming for construction. And you'll see a map here that gives you some ideas of where that activity is occurring. In office construction, we have 50,000 square feet that have been delivered for the past eight quarters, but there is nothing under construction at this time for our office. We do have office space proposed for the, the next eight quarters. And that amount will be for over 120,000 square feet. So not as much activity for construction in our office space. Industrial, our delivered square footage for the past eight quarters is 72,600. We have 173,000 square feet that's under construction now, but nothing in the pipeline at this time. So just giving an overview of our project, these are projects that you've seen before that are still under construction or in permitting. So these are not new projects. But if you move on to what are new to projects that we've reviewed, I'm giving you an overview of just a few. So the Hadley is a project under construction now. 444 units of multifamily that is being developed by the Latigo Group. It's a 28-acre site and amenities that will also be available at this site. The expected completion that we have, that we've been able to identify is 2024. And City Mattress, they are currently building out space at the Cape Coral Commons. And this is a national family-owned retailer. This will be a 10,000-square-foot retail store. That's the eighth location in Southwest Florida. And City Mattress will be joining some of the other national tenants that we've seen at this particular development, those being First Wash, Crumble Cookie, Firehouse Subs. And this is a 13-acre retail development site that this sits on. And Achieva Credit Union, they are currently under construction in the plaza where Publix is, at the corner of Burnstall Road and Pine Island Road. They will be constructing just over 4,600 square feet for their new branch location, with the address being 3031 Southwest Pine Island Road. In Victory Park, this project is currently in permitting. We're looking at a 140-acre master planned development. And the proposed uses for this park include a range, with that being medical, retail, multifamily, veteran services and a hotel. This particular development is being designed to promote walkability, biking and public transit options. And I wanted to provide a list of some of our new businesses that have opened up in Cape Coral for the past quarter. We've got about 23 businesses, and it's a mix in terms of what we're seeing. Some of it, general merchandise and retail, some construction and some beauty. So we've got a list here of what those businesses are and their addresses. And just wanting to give them a welcome, this does not include any of our home-based businesses. And for our marketing activities, this is just a list of some of the projects or activities that we've had going on, speaking engagements, print digital ads, an editorial that's forthcoming, networking events are open for business campaign that Melissa gave a preview to in her presentation. And then also working with communications with our, our marketing. So I wanted to just give a little bit of further detail into some of the activities that are happening. With our print and digital ads, these are two of the publications that we're working with. And I just wanted to give you some idea of what their target market is and the demographics that, that will support that. For Business Facilities Magazine, which is a magazine that features commercial real estate, economic development and site selection logistics, this particular publication is widely used for C-level or corporate-level executives. There are a total of over 100,000 senior-level executives and location advisors that reference this particular publication for their information. 71% of these corporations are planning to expand, relocate or consolidate their businesses over the next three years. So the idea being that we want our ads to be there as they're looking at locations and reading about some of the sites and expansions underway, that we'll have placement in there and they can contact the city of Cape Coral for any expansions or considerations for Southwest Florida. We also have a more local publication that we've advertised in. Their distribution being in Naples, Bonita Springs, Estero, Fort Myers and Cape Coral as well. And this subscription is for 50,000 in print and online business owners. I wanted to highlight one of the speaking engagements. I had the opportunity to speak at the February 9th Dinner Meeting for the Cape Coral Construction Industry Association. I'm sure everyone's familiar with the industry, but just in terms of the organization's mission to advocate for construction industry, also there being a valuable partner for the city of Cape Coral. I had the opportunity to speak to them and just talk about some of the events that are happening. And I actually just gave them a preview of our last quarterly report. I didn't want to give them any information that you guys hadn't had. But I think it went very well, great feedback from those who attended the meeting. And the membership president, she, that may not be the right title, but very interested in there being some further collaboration with the city of Cape Coral and working with the, the construction industry on some joint projects. And wanted to just bring to your attention the President's Circle event. So this was not the traditional type of marketing, but this was a collaboration with the Horizon Council, the Foundation and the Lee County Economic Development Council to host their President's Circle event. So this event was held to, to unveil those who were nominated for the 2022 Industry Awards. It was an opportunity for some of those business owners to visit Cape Coral and for us to have great networking opportunities with them. This particular event is a 30-year event and a great way of showing appreciation to our industry businesses. And this is one of the new slides. I wanted to just give you an overview or some information on. One of the tours that I had with Lee County and FAM stands for Familiarization Tour on March 28th. I joined some of the Lee County officials. And we got, had an opportunity to tour some of the sites that are under construction and those that are available for construction. So it gave us, gave all of us a good perspective in terms of the activity that's happening. But it was an opportunity to, to network, talk with and, and share some information on Cape Coral with those who attended the tour. That included the Lee County Commissioner's Office, Enterprise Florida, Lee Health, Career Source and Lee County Port Authority. And just to wrap up some of the other activities that the office has completed. We have completed the scope of work for our Economic Development Strategic Plan. It is currently being advertised and that advertisement will come to an end on May 3rd. We had our business-in-a-box idea that Councilwoman Cummings has presented to us. And we've had an opportunity to workshop that with our Cape Competes Advisory Board. We've already had some implementation meetings with Communications and Development Services. And I think we're going to bring them, bring it back to the Advisory Board again, just to get some more feedback and, and a gauge on, on how they think we're doing in terms of progressing and if it's in line with, with what they've recommended. We were also able to get the application process complete for Cape Competes. I worked with Neighborly Software to have that software developed for our particular incentive programs. It is now available on our EBDO website. And I had the opportunity to attend the Site Selectors Guild Conference in San Antonio just a short couple of weeks ago. It was a great opportunity to meet with site selectors nationwide, talk to them and get a feel for what they're looking for, what type of projects are in the pipeline. What I, I got from them is there is a lot of activity happening from some of the funding that our federal legislation has passed with the CHIPS Act and the Inflation Reduction Act. So a lot of these projects that are developing larger-scale projects, they are geared towards energy renewable-type projects and semiconductor chips and the supply chain that supports that. So I, it's good to know what's out there, what a lot of that activity is and what's driving that. I had the opportunity to speak with some of the site selectors, talk about Cape Coral, made some connections with them on social media and just had a great conversation with, with one of those site selectors. I am now serving on the Resilient Lee Education and Workforce Branch. So we had our kickoff meeting Thursday, March 23rd. And we will have subsequent monthly meetings with the idea of our focus being workforce development and education, but that being a component of the end goal, where we want to develop a recovery and resiliency plan in response to what we've seen in terms of devastation caused by Hurricane Ian. And now I want to take an opportunity to unveil a new application that we have on our website. And I had the opportunity to work with our IT department and Communications on the rollout of this application. And let's see if we can get that going. So I'm sure as a council member, you have your constituents who typically or a lot of times will ask, well, what's happening, you know, on the corner of Pine Island Road and what, what construction is underway? They're very curious to find out what we have in the pipeline. I get the call a lot of times asking the same questions. And I've learned that it's something that our local Realtors really look forward to in terms of being able to talk about the new developments and investment that's happening as they're working to attract commercial in our area. So we've got this new Interactive EDO Projects Map. And you'll see that we have parcels that are coded orange, a light yellow or cream and green. Orange being projects that are in review, the pale yellow being those that are approved. And then we have the green parcels that are actually issued in terms of permits for construction. So I'll give you a short kind of tour to navigate this. And... Expand this a bit more. So if you go to any one of these color-coded parcels, you'll get a, an opportunity to see what's actually happening and a description of the projects. So here you'll see what you will find with any of these projects that, that you click. You'll get the, the address of the property, who the owner is, the type of zoning that's associated with it, and a description of what the actual project will be. Some of these are projects that you might have to dig a little bit deeper in. But for the most part, when you look at the description category, it will give you a great idea and information on what type of project. So in this case, you'll see that this was ABC Fine Wine and Spirits. Their application date, March 5th, and that it was issued July 8th. And with that being green-coded, this is one that is, the permit has been issued and it's under construction. So if we go to, let's see if this is one of the projects we talked about. This is the Latigo Group and their project, the Hadley. You'll see it's under construction. And the information on the permits, who the actual developer is or owner of the project. So again, this is just information to help our residents, help you as council members and our other professionals get a understanding and access to projects that are underway. That's the end of my presentation. That's the end of my presentation and just open it up for any questions.
Thank you, Sharon. Appreciate the interactive map. Councilmember Cummings.
Thank you. The, the EDs, that we're just seeing, the EDO projects?
Yes.
Where is this at on the website? So, because I'm noticing on the website front page, we've got Cape Coral Quest, Meeting Agendas Minutes, 911 Centers, Career Opportunities. I don't see you. Bill Water Notice, Building Permits, Park Go Bonds, Be Prepared, Hurricane, Sign Up Earth Day, Cape Coral Quest.
So the site did just go live. If you were typing in the URL directly, you would go to capecoral.gov/edoprojects. You can also access the interactive map from the EDO site along the left navigation side. Let me see if I can pull that up. You can click that link and get to it from there. So let's see.
Okay, so it is going on the website though?
Yes.
It takes about 72 hours before it actually appears? If it just went live?
I think it's live now.
I'm going to check. I think it is live.
Okay. Yep, got it right here.
So here you go. On the, on our site, along the left, you'll see the navigation menu at the bottom, Interactive EDO Project Map. Will be another way to access this. And it'll bring you up to the same site.
Yeah, it's not coming up on mine yet. So my next question is, I think this is awesome. Once and again, this is great. Okay, here it is. Now I got it. Are you going to be putting this also, another button on the front page of the website? So it's, it's easier at someone's fingertips to kind of go and click, click in?
I think we can certainly do that. As different projects and programs roll out, we typically will see them featured on our site. But I will work with Communications and IT and have that included. If it's not already.
And I, I love this because we've got so many great projects going on now in Cape. So people can just go in at our fingertips and take a look at where the permits are, you know, how everything's looking. Talking about our businesses and it's great to see our numbers are going up. We have more opportunities coming. With everything you guys are doing, updating, it's amazing. Have you also considered in, in your department, putting all the businesses here in Cape Coral so it's easy access? So when they're, this is the future. I'm not saying like tomorrow, but as you're building this out, you know, people's like looking for, who, who, you know, roofing company. They can go and click it and then, you know, you know, because we're supporting all our businesses here in Cape Coral. And we don't really have that many. We're at eight percent, I believe. I mean, this is something I think would be kind of cool to add in, in the near future.
A directory of businesses depending on categories. I will talk with our Development Services and IT and C.
And I know things are on Google. It's easier at your fingertips, da-da-da-da-da. But I just think it's just one step farther for, you know, working with the businesses that we do have and support. Knowing what you guys are doing now and hearing behind the scenes of what you guys are wanting to do in the future. I just think this is kind of good completion as you're building the website anyway. But thank you.
Sure.
I think you're doing great. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Welsh.
Thank you. Just a quick question. When looking at the retail construction activity, it seems like the numbers are pretty high. Does that include our storage facilities considered retail construction? Or is, or that being excluded from these numbers? That'd be page eight.
So let me see. I brought some of the backup data. I don't know if I had that, but give me one second.
Yeah, and the reason I ask is we've got an ordinance coming forward that's already been introduced. And we're looking at maybe doing a moratorium on storage facilities. And I just want to make sure that if, if that is included in these numbers of 339,000 square feet, that we can break that, break those numbers out before our final meeting so that we have a little bit more of an understanding as what actual retail and what potentially some storage facilities are.
Are you, are you referencing what's in the pipeline or what's in the ground already?
Well, it's showing delivered square feet of retail space. I'm just wondering if that's considered retail or not.
So on, on the delivered, what's in the ground, we can run an actual report from our property appraisers website. If you would like for that, for the meeting upcoming, we can list out all the different square footages of each type of, of unit we have in the city for that discussion.
For this one though, is that, that's all I'm asking. Is that considered retail?
I, I don't know the answer to that. It has to fall into one of the three categories. So if I were going to place it in one of them, it would be retail. I can look at, into that and see how it's categorized. But in terms of the square footage in the pipeline, that does not include any of the storage space.
Okay.
That I discussed in.
And just for that upcoming meeting, if, I would like to have it. I don't know if the rest of council would, but I'm sure they wouldn't say no to it. But if you could provide that information, that'd be great.
Try and identify the number of, the amount of square footage in the storage.
Well, no, an actual, what I consider retail, not necessarily storage as being a retail.
We can get it. Okay, and I'll share it.
You know, because that's different types of businesses. So just a little bit of a breakdown.
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
Councilmembers, thank you.
Thank you. Echoing Councilmember Welch's need, I, when we look at storage as well, we just talked about, you know, boat storage and whatnot. When we look at number of square feet of storage, does that include flat deck storage? So the people with boats, boat trailers, RVs. How do we, how do we look at that flat deck storage for those types of needs?
You mean open storage?
Yes.
Yeah. Oh, it's open.
And so from a square footage standpoint, is there any differentiation when we look at, for instance, the vacancy rates that we're looking at, retail office and industrial? So when we look at a storage facility, how do we know if they're full or not, number one? And, and then number two, for the flat deck storage, do we know whether we have enough of that flat deck storage for the needs of the consumers that have those trailers that need a place to put them?
I believe the data that we use, you, we get purchased from a company, right?
Yes. So CoStar is only, it, it, there are going to be some, some activity that's not included in this. But specific to Cape Coral, we can certainly try to pull all of our permitting data and filter out what we're looking at for square footage and the categories. For the, the tenant makeup, that's information. I don't know that the storage would apply to this. But I do know in talking with our CoStar rep that they are going to be able to dig a bit deeper in getting information on what the makeup is for particular areas, who the tenants are. Again, I don't know that that's going to address your question, but getting under the, the surface and getting more information will be available from CoStar. This information, we'll have to see what we've got from permitting and Development Services.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I love the fact that we're seeing more national companies coming in to the projects, you know, that we're involved with. Certainly to give our, our citizens a reason to stay here in the city and do their business here in the city than have to go across the river for the, the types of, of, you know, businesses that are, that are coming into our area along the Pine Island Corridor and other places. That's really good to see. The more of that we can do, I think is better for everyone. The multifamily developments that are coming in hopefully will, can make a real quick hit, if you will, to the supply. Certainly supply and demand is, you know, the age-old formula of, of cost. And so the more supply we have, the more we can, you know, you know, see the, the reasonable pricing of, of housing being there. So great to see that. And I would say that you missed one of the marketing activities you were involved with, and that was being in front of the TDC. You and your department, you know, put together a fabulous presentation that basically eyes popped, jaws dropped with pictures of the things that are going on in our city that it seemed that no one there in, in the county knew was going on. So thank you for putting that together and representing this well at, at the county level. So that, you know, the word gets out that there's a lot going on here and it's all good.
Thank you. I did miss that. And I meant to highlight that even though I didn't have a present, a slide dedicated to it. That was something that I wanted to highlight. As Councilmember Stanky said, it, it really did get a lot of traction in terms of making it known what's happening in Cape Coral. There were a number of those who attended that came up to me after the presentation to, to just express their surprise because they did not know that all of that was happening. I had a great conversation with some of the staff members for the Visitors and Convention Bureau in trying to make sure that we're more engaged with how the marketing activities is happening. And they were very receptive to that. We're also hoping that we'll get a good project coming out of it in the sporting arena. So that's to be determined.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Shepherd.
Yes, start off with, thank you for your work. What I'm looking for is a more defined list that was already mentioned. And the reason is, we only have so much property left. We want to make sure that we get the wants and needs that we need for our city. And what I would like to see happen is I, I have many developers and investors that meet with me and I'm sure meet with other council members that come here excited. They want to invest in our city. And sometimes what they want to build or invest in isn't something we really want or need. And we've all witnessed that in past meetings where different investors come forward with their ideas. And we're not really tickled pink about these different ideas. You know, I would like the opportunity when I sit down with them to talk them into a real want and need. And it's, makes it so much easier for me to do that when I have the tools. And what I mean by the tools is if we did a study on what businesses we actually need as we build out where we're lacking with the facts to back it up so that we can literally sell the idea. So for instance, we had an organization come forward at a past meeting that wanted to build a storage facility. And how did they try to sell that to us? They had facts on the want and need of, and saying that there was a shortage and, you know, they had numbers to back up their, their information. I'm looking for the same thing if the city, if your staff can put together a list of what this city is going to need as we build out. You know, are we going to need more gas stations? Are we going to need more supermarkets? Are we going, you know, there's, you're the professional. All the different wants and needs that we, where we're lacking, backing it up with the numbers and statistics. So that when investors come forward that are, that are really excited about investing in Cape Coral, we can literally help steer them in the right direction into developing a project or building a business that we need. Because the ones I meet are all excited. The majority of them are not from here at all. They just hear about our city. They get excited. They come here. And believe it or not, a lot of them make their decision based on what they see. So if they see a certain business that opened, that is flourishing, they just assume that if they invest in that same business, that they're going to flourish and be successful too. Maybe not knowing that that particular type of business is exhausted, meaning we have the amount that we already need. So us having the tools to be able to steer them in other directions, it helps us work with city staff as a council, as working more of a team. You communicate to us on the wants and needs, giving us the facts and data to, to back it up that it can be a successful project because of the need. And it helps us sell that project to these investors and developers that come forward to us. And I think that would, that would be a great tool to help us with our build out. It would let all of us work together as a team in, in getting the different businesses and, and things that we need at build out. But having the facts and data to back it up to show them, hey, if you invest in this business instead of the one you want to, you know, here, here's the information that shows you're going to be successful.
So I think I can respond to that with a quick, short-term report that I can provide. But it will be more focused on the retail leakage and gaps. But it, it, it will provide valuable data in terms of where there's more demand and where there's a supply that's needed for that. The longer-term response and, and answer to that, that's what I'm really looking forward to getting from the strategic plan that I listed for some of the summary of our other activities. So we actually have already gone out to advertise for that. That will give us a great picture of what we're looking at in terms of our SWOT analysis, what are our strengths, weaknesses, and opportunities. It will also go into some of the more physical, land-related and infrastructure feedback and analysis. But we will be looking at our workforce. We will be looking at where there's some clusters and there's an opportunity for us to, to build on a particular industry. So I am very excited about getting that and that will give us an even broader picture of what you're looking for. But I can get the retail gap analysis to you very, fairly soon.
So for instance, I've already sat down with an investor who wasn't aware of projects coming forward. We know of these projects, but the masses don't know about these projects coming forward. Some of these projects coming forward need other support businesses to support their business once they're established. So that information added as well. I already did that on my own. I informed an investor of a future project that was coming and say, hey, maybe this business idea can help support that other business. It's going to be a need. It's coming. It's on its way. Start working on it. So that, that's what I'm looking more for us to be more proactive and having the tools so we can work as a team in, in, in pushing the developers and investors in what we want for our city.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right. Any other discussion? Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Under 4B items seven and eight, we covered earlier on the agenda. Item five is, is there any other roundtable discussion? Seeing none, time and place of future meetings. We have an attorney-client session scheduled for Wednesday, April 19th, 2023, beginning at 1:00 in Council Chambers. A regular meeting of the City, Cape Coral City Council is scheduled for Wednesday, April 19th, 2023, beginning at 4:30 PM in Council Chambers. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Second.
Second.
Meeting is adjourned. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.